Good morning, everyone. If I didn't catch the person, good morning. Welcome. I will not waste any more time. As we talked about fifteen minutes. So, Dr. Brady.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here. Welcome to our reification and to our cabinet and to senior portion of our leadership team. Before we start, I want to introduce everyone to Sophia Lipson, who is our student board member.
I took Sophie, Cynthia, to the health admissions meeting today. I wanted to meet them. She really, they asked her some questions and it was very nice. She really held her own. And I thank you for taking the time to listen to this.
Great. And so, since this is a kickoff to your senior year and also your student board member year, these are a lot of faces that you're going to be able to meet and get an understanding of what everybody does. So I do want to take a minute to just kind of go around the room. We'll start with Mr. Bugbee, because a lot of the work that you do as a student board member is centered around, you know, getting that thirty thousand foot view of our school district. And these are the people that really lead the change in the district. So I want you to start to get to know them a good bit. So we'll start over there with Mr. Bugbee.
Sophia, welcome to the team. Craig Bugbee, principal at Forest Man Elementary.
My name is Jackie Brown.
Hey, morning. Matt Warner, Assistant Superintendent of Personal Services.
Justin Seaver, Assistant Superintendent for Education Services.
Can everybody please speak up?
We don't have microphones and I'm having difficulty hearing with you. Please speak up. Thank you.
Maggie Berry, Courtney of Elementary Education.
Sandy, Assistant Director of IT.
Hi, Sophia. I'm Will Karat, Director of Construction.
Sophia, I'm Ken Ross, and we're the Director of Making Small Operations.
Hi, Sophia. Tim Ellis, Executive Director of Athletic and Community Day. Know you well.
Sophia, Mark Bee, Executive Director of School.
Hello, Rebecca Stankin, Executive Director of Communications and Strategic Initiatives.
Hi, Sophia. I'm Raphael Fuesen. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Nice to meet you.
Good morning. Lauren Collins-Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Hi, Sophia. Mr. Stewart.
Hi, Captain Johnson. This is what I love to do this place.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. If you will just look at the agenda I provided to you. I did send you the link to that. But you can also look at the hard copy if you want to. It's the sheet that says Board Cabinet Nearly Met and Meeting, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I just wanna kind of go through the first top part of that, just so that you get an idea of how we're structuring our day. We're going to start with our strategic plan. And I think that the most logical place to start is kind of where we left off. There were some information that we didn't have at the time. There's some new information and there were some areas that were in progress and we didn't have the data. We have that now. And so, we're going to show that. It's in an organized format, so that you're not having to reconnect what you learned before. So we have the presentation that will be led by our principals shortly. They will also be, at that time, introducing any new goals or areas of growth based on that new information that has come in. And then, we will hopefully get through the getting caught up before some of the questions come in. But once those questions start and that dialogue starts, we would love to open up that discussion to get some direction on the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Because, as you know, we lead from this meeting today into our leadership conference Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So it's great timing. All of the information that is discussed, generated today, is the information that we use for our agenda for the next three days as our larger team, all thirty of us. A couple of areas that I know that I talked about my superintendent's report that I'd like to see in the strategic plan, that Laura and I would partner on, is our chronic absenteeism issue and also our student discipline, increased behavior. And on that topic, as you're aware, we've been meeting all summer for the Student Behavior Accountability Advisory Panel. We've been meeting every Monday night with our community group. Our principals have been there and facilitated by Laura, Rebecca, Mark Lee, and myself at the police station. Chief Stainbrook is a great partner. He has been at every single meeting for every minute of the time that we've met, as well as our SROs as well. So it's been a great working team. What you have in front of you, because of the timing, we finished our last meeting with recommendations from our community group. Then we had them ranked by priority. So you have them, and I just want to be really clear about, that just came in yesterday. So we have not had the time to go over, as a team, any of those recommendations, but I wanted you to have a work product in front of you. Because we spent the last, you know, several months on Monday nights working together. I want you to have what we have. We share that with you. You can look through that, but that's information that we're gonna have to look at as a team, because we've not had the chance to do that. But we already know by reviewing some of the information, that there's some things that we're gonna be able to start right away to improve some of the discipline, the way that it's communicated, the way that the data's collected before school starts. If you look at number two, it says Board Calendar, so I don't want you to be confused by that. It's, I included a link on there for the California Department of Education. This is kind of an important time for us, that we plan at this retreat, at this conference, for the full year. So if there are things that come up throughout the year in the calendar that are important to the Board, we would like to get that direction from you today, so that we can plan for the future of this school year. So in other words, one of the, like Holocaust Remembrance Day, and we're right in the middle of it, and, you know, we're getting questions about it. We want to know if there are some things throughout the year that are really important, that we get to know that now, so that we can work with our teachers, so that we can get the right materials. So we'll have a chance for some dialogue after the update on the strategic plan, to have those conversations with you. The PBIS data, as you know, we did a survey at the end of the year. I provided that information for you, so that you can get kind of an overview of the information from our families, our students, and our staff. Principals will also embed that into their updates, so that you have that today. And then, there was a list of topics that was presented on the Q and A form. So if there's time, we're happy to address something if it isn't already embedded in some of the work that we have. The information that you have, the presentation, we are going to collect that back from you, because the scores are still not final. So, you know, we're recording the session today. We are, you know, this information is still in draft form and is embargoed, so we cannot have any hard copies leaving the room. So if you're taking notes on something, you may want to take notes on something else, because we're going to collect those six packets from you. And then, we have an afternoon as well. We have a long afternoon as well, that we'll do some Board Superintendent work in the afternoon. And then, we have our closed session at three o'clock, which we will meet at the College and Career Center, right across the courtyard. Okay? And of course, there's lunch at approximately four. Any questions before we begin?
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, we're gonna kick it off with Mr. Stewart. Sorry, I'm gonna be toggling between my laptop, so I can see better.
So when we met a couple of months ago, we shared what we thought was our progress in our strategic plan for high school. And when we did that, some of our areas, we were able to, I think, successfully say that we had met. There was one area in particular that we firmly believed we had not met, and so we'll talk today about sort of what our next steps are for that piece. And then, there were a few that were still in progress. And one that really is still kind of in progress, in part because, as Dr. Brady said, some of these numbers are unofficial and embargoed, but they are, we are able to look at them and sort of glean where we are today, even if they're unofficial yet. So, the first one that I wanted to bring your attention to was the U.S. News and World Report ranking. And that one is a little bit tricky, because it goes back a couple of years. So really and truly, we are still in progress in this one, and it's something that, over the next couple of days on our retreat, we may want to think about trying to be able to make a sort of smart goal out of the U.S. News and World Report piece, because the data that they do collect and report out goes back a couple of years. And so, we may want to just identify what some of these pieces of the rankings are, so that we can monitor it with a little bit more immediacy, so that we're not saying, again, in the fall or in the spring, that, you know, we're still waiting on this data. But right now, we are still waiting on the U.S. News and World Report ranking data, because of the nature of how that program works. Some of the things that we do have a little bit more ability to talk about are all the rest, really. So in terms of measuring progress, this was one of the things where, when we met a couple of months ago, we said that we did not meet the standard. We moved it over to in-progress, because I think we are genuinely in progress of putting in place the system that we're going to need to be able to do a better job with this moving into the school year. So one of the things that we're gonna be doing in order to accomplish this is, at secondary level, so both at BBMS and high school, we're gonna be partnering with a company called NWEA. And I'm sure you guys have heard about that a little bit. And what they're gonna be able to do is provide for us a giant sort of catalog, if you will, of normed assessments that are nationwide, that we'll be able to implement in our math, English, and science classes, to individualize instruction for kids, to decide where they, each student is at immediately in that moment, where they need to go, help students understand what their learning goals are individually, and then also sort of more in the aggregate, where teachers can look at an entire class of students and say, "We're really understanding this standard in math. This one, we're really missing the mark." And we can also tailor it to be specific in terms of being very specifically targeted towards our work in the CASP and the CAST, which we're gonna look at in a second. So this is going to help students see where they are at and where they need to go, and it's gonna help our teachers be able to look at their data in that way that we weren't able to come to you last spring and say, "We have a really good way of looking at our data and having it inform our instruction moving forward." It's going, we already have our pull-out days scheduled, our assessment windows scheduled for the year, the days that we're gonna pull teachers out, have substitutes, so that departments are working together to look at the data together. And we have that at all, actually, at all four schools. And I'll let Dr. Schon and the elementary principals talk a little bit more about that. So we feel pretty comfortable moving that from no, where we were last spring, to in-progress at the moment, because we've, we're partnering with this group, and we're pretty excited about what it's gonna bring for us this year in terms of our data analysis and helping all of our students understand their areas that they still need to grow in, both for their academic progress as well as their progress towards CASP. So, with that said, we have CASP data here. It's maybe the hardest thing, but you should have it in your packet there. So this one is still in progress. Part of the issue, and the reason why we can't definitively say we've met this goal, is because our, the cohort that we would be looking at as juniors this last year, didn't take the test in eighth grade. So as we've talked about before, when students get to high school, they don't actually take the CASP testing in English and Math until junior year. We are now gonna be starting, begun the process of having them take the CAST science test in tenth grade. But for now, the students that took the test last year as eleventh graders, didn't take the test in two thousand and twenty because of the pandemic. Therefore, we don't have a cohort data for them to see what their growth was between eighth grade and eleventh grade, but we do have their eleventh grade numbers here for you to look at. And as you can see, we have seventy-two percent of our students meet or exceed the standards in ELA, and we fell shorter than that in our math proficiency. So we had forty-three percent of our students in math in eleventh grade meet or exceed the standards. And obviously, that's a pretty large gap between how we performed in ELA and math. And so, that's gonna be part of our major work this year. Talking, looking at it strategically over the next few days for our plan, how we want to use NWEA and our instructional practices to try to close that gap between those two, and really raise what we're seeing in our math scores there. If you look over on the CAST, that is the science test, interestingly, this is the first year we had our tenth graders take it in addition to our twelfth graders, and they actually performed very, very similarly. So our tenth grade CAST results were thirty-nine percent met or exceeded, and in twelfth grade, thirty-nine percent also met or exceeded. One of the things that we talked about as our goal was to move students from nearly met to met. And as you can see, especially in our CAST, we have a giant chunk of kids that are in nearly met, at fifty-two percent, and forty-seven percent between the two grades. Very few in the sort of lowest realm that didn't meet. And so, that is gonna be a big bang for our buck in moving that nearly met, those big numbers in the nearly met in the CAST this year, in ten, both in tenth and twelfth grade.
Excuse me, once again, it says CAST. Is that different?
So CAST is the science. So we have three, essentially, three state testing subjects. CASP is math and English, CAST the science. And they just try to make the acronym as confusing as imaginable.
And the science, just so you guys are all aware, we don't know how other schools have performed. It has been normed over the last three years. So this is the first time we're actually seeing tangible scores for individualized students. So we have no clue how else comparatively anybody else has done. Again, because in previous years, we had assessed in science, but never received scores, because they were using those scores only to normalize or to norm the assessment. So this is great information for us to finally have, because we've assessed you guys, but never knew how well you did, or what the outcome was, or what they were actually assessing you on. And so, this is really great for us to unpack and have for moving forward. And it'll be interesting, too, to see what other school districts have done and how well they have performed as well, as soon as this state releases this information on all districts.
And you're expecting that way?
Last year is about the end of September, is when the state allowed us to actually do our official presentation to the Board of Educations. Like, an example right now is, Promosa hasn't been allowing their individualized students to see. We had signed the articulation agreement between us and Ares, so the individualized students got theirs. And we are calculating a lot of this data by pulling all those individual reports and calculating them internally. We won't know until the state releases the official letter allowing us to technically tell everybody.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? And last year, I think it was like September twenty-sixth, when I was able to actually do the presentation to the Board of Education.
Great. On the next slide, we have the two thousand and twenty-three SAT score breakdown. This was not a line item in our strategic plan goals, but just for reference, when we're talking about sort of normed and standardized testing, CASP, you know, one of the things that all schools struggle with, especially as kids get older, is the piece of motivation for a test like CASP, where they don't see the immediate tangible results for themselves as being beneficial. The SAT obviously tends to be a bigger ticket and more personalized in terms of how students want to see themselves being successful. They see it's immediacy for certain schools, obviously, you know, the DUCs don't accept SATs anymore. But anyway, as you can see here, on our SAT score breakdown, we had a hundred and ninety-three juniors take the test this year. We had a total score average of ten ninety-seven, which is about a hundred and sixty points above the state average. And much closer in English and math scores in the SAT than we saw in the CAST. And as Dr. Schon, our resident math expert to my left here, was explaining, obviously, there's different levels of math that we see in the SAT, which is more algorithm-based versus the CAST, which actually goes on further to some of the higher levels of math that we're working on our kids here with school. But as the SAT would tell us, that our students are closer in those two domains than our CAST does, and so, we're gonna continue to work on that.
If I can insert, sorry, this is something that we have access to, that again, is embargoed data, that we hope to be able to utilize to build a strategic plan, but again, we can't necessarily release this. The reason that I think the SAT is important is, we need to find a way, leveraging, to motivate our eleventh graders to take the CASP as serious as they do the SAT. Our SAT growth data from fall of eleventh grade, our mean score for math was five sixty. For the spring of eleventh grade, jumped to six hundred. So the instruction is there. We know that our students are growing and making growth, predominantly in high school, and that's apparent in our SAT scores and our AP scores. How do we get that to translate into our CASP scores? And I know you just lived it, so we'll be relying on you in the history a lot more this year, trying to think strategically of what is the carrot to dangle to keep students motivated, to want to put what they did in the SAT and our AP scores into our CASP scores? Because it's definitely not reflected of those two, when you look at the data.
How would you describe what's being tested in the SAT and in the APs as compared to the others? Is it, for example, are they just not versions of the same question? Or, you know what I'm saying?
A hundred percent.
What is the difference? And so, that's my first question. In your mind?
Yes, so AP and AP are definitely content driven with critical thinking. So if you know the content, can you apply it to a similar situation? Versus, CASP is really around the common core, so it's just blanketed benchmarks. And I hate to say it out loud, I love the CASP.
No, I mean, we really need to talk about what it is, so we can address the problem. So that's why I value your opinion.
They do do the similar things. There's a content piece to both the CASP, SAT and AP. SAT and AP is what we're really working towards, is that critical thinking and that apply to like the CERs and being able to take the information and not just compute it back out, because we have these personal devices, we have these personal devices. It's, can you take the information and apply it elsewhere? So like AP, there's writing portions. Also, SAT, there's a ton of writing portions, so you can't just calculate it. CASP, there is some performance task based, so you definitely have to critical think and reapply. But there's a lot about around just, do you hit the standards forward in the fourth grade? Do you hit the standards for the fifth grade? It doesn't necessarily transfer to the next grade level. It's not moving it forward or up and over. It's really just, I think it's more, more rote memorization.
Okay, so more regurgitation?
Yeah, I think so.
I have a question. With the, with the programming, the NWEA, Mrs. Keever, do you have something that you wanted to add to that?
No, no, just asking about it.
Okay. Sorry, if she wanted to add to Dustin's.
No, no.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
That's okay. For the NWEA, that is your new assessment tool, regardless of CASP or the APs, if you're utilizing this tool, I'm assuming you're utilizing this across the board?
What do you mean by across the board?
I mean, what subjects are you testing?
Math, English, and Science.
Okay, so we're talking math, English, and Science with AP as well, and with the CASP with the scores. So when, how are you going to implement that in terms of training the teachers, training the students? And how are you going to monitor that in terms of accountability? So making certain that the teachers are actually using this assessment tool and the students, and then evaluating that data, and then taking action steps on that throughout the year? I know you said that you have like a scheduled formal data review. Is that going to be, I mean, are all the different grade levels going to be doing that? And will you have like quarterly, like a report as to where you are at on math, English, and science, based on your data assessments, so that we can track along the year where we're, where we think we're tracking, so we're not waiting till the end of the year to see results like this? That we can kind of have a check-in or a report that comes out that just says, "Here's what the assessments are looking like, here's the steps we're taking, these are the areas that we're taking out," or what have you, so that we can see how we're tracking?
Absolutely.
The short answer is yes.
Yeah, I'll jump in there. So I want to think the board, too, on this one is, so through our last strategic plan, we realized that, you know, ninth and tenth grade, we don't have a lot of data on the ninth and tenth grade students. In previous years, even prior to like No Child Up Behind, the pastor, there wasn't a lot of data or a lot of assessments happening within that ninth and tenth grade realm, so we just waited blindly until eleventh grade. But with NWEA, what's great is through this, this old strategic plan, we identified the need and have already created the, I mean, use the Education Services Calendar, we're assessing all students six through twelve, six through eleventh grade, not twelfth graders, you guys are lucky, you focus on AP, you're off the hook, but six through eleventh graders right within the first two weeks of school. And then, from there, we already scheduled, what Mr. Stewart was saying, is we already scheduled data chats into the upper grades, which is unique and different, that has not happened. If you talk to an English teacher or a math teacher previous, we're bringing them all together, and all of us together are looking exactly where the students are in math, science, and English, six through twelfth grade, those days are already scheduled. We're doing it again in January, to make sure that we have not only where they are at the start of the school year, and how's that gonna inform our instruction, and how are we gonna intervene for those kids that aren't meeting state standards at that grade level? We're doing it again in January, so right before we do our mid-year update to the Board of Education again, because we did not have that previous data, again, informing our instruction for that second semester. And then, again, once more, right at the end of the school year, along with the sixth through tenth grade though, I think at the edge, because eleventh graders will be taking the SAT at that time. But yes, we, we already have them scheduled, we already are using those days, pull-out days, for effective professional development around what those test scores mean, and then what our next steps.
And so, you're, it will be, you're starting the implementation at the beginning.
Right, and it's a true.
The teachers will all be informed, so that it's beyond boarded, they'll be boarded.
They've already been.
And they were a part of the process of looking at NWEA before, so that we, Dustin organized us looking at multiple options, the teachers were a part of giving input in that process of what we were gonna go with and how it was gonna look. How will you address the lower grades? Because if I recall correctly, there was somewhat of a drop in the math, I would say, third to fifth.
Fourth to fifth is really kind of what we were discussing a super. It's I-ready. So we have I-ready, so the purchases and the training and the professional budget, we have I-ready that will run basically kinder to fifth, and then NWEA, sixth through twelve. Neither product, in education, you'll see, there's either like people that focus primarily on elementary, or people that focus primarily on secondary. So there really isn't a true tool from two K through twelfth grade that we would all buy into. And so, I-ready will do exactly that same model, right at the start of the school. We're going to be able to assess our students, identify interventions that we need, or also to gifted kids. Like, we buy those kids that are blowing the test out of the lunch, so how are we also gonna differentiate for them, too, at the top end, right? We can't forget that there are kids that are exceeding state standards, so how are we meeting their needs as well? And we'll do it again in January, and we'll do it again at the end of the school year.
So your baseline is September?
We'll be talking about that at the elementary level.
So your baseline is September, January is your first check-in, and then at the end of the year?
Yeah, okay. I'd like to hear from each department head before we do questions. Otherwise, we will not get done today. Right? So true, please finish up.
Sure thing. AP scores, really good news, in terms of, we wanted to increase our total number of students going through your higher on the exams. If you look at the data here, we have total number of AP students went up by about fifty this year. Number of exams taken went up by about a hundred. AP students with scores of three plus, three plus or more went up by about fifty. We had three hundred and forty-eight students out of that, three hundred and ninety-nine total AP students. For a total percentage of AP students with scores of three or better, at eighty-seven percent, up a percent from last year, so we didn't hit two percent, but we did see growth. And in particular, we saw growth in the number of tests taken, which we're really excited about. And so, our percentage of AP students this year went from twenty-eight on campus to three to four. And so our percentage of AP students this year went from twenty-eight on campus to three to three percent. And our goal is to continue to grow that number, to grow the number of students challenging themselves to AP, taking AP course, taking the AP test and then passing that AP with three or better. And our scores across the board were really, really good. And we'll be able to look at individual tests at greater length at another time. But in general, our AP program knocked it out in progress. Graduation rate. We are still waiting on official numbers. They're still trickling over the summer as as students that maybe were five credits short at graduation time are finishing summer school courses and things like that. But we saw in twenty nineteen on our California dashboard, ninety-two point eight percent. Twenty twenty-two, ninety-three point two percent. And this year, right now, we're calculating at about ninety-five percent for our graduation rate. And then this last slide, we met all of these goals when we met with you guys a couple of months ago. But the last one that we did want to hit on was that we had gotten our PBIS data, which is, I mean, it's still up there, I know you can't see it, but hopefully you have it there in front of you. And so just looking through it really quickly, on the left there, you have the student data, parent data in the middle and staff data on the right and sort of their percentages. It doesn't have the the actual questions in there. We can do a deeper dive on that at this point. But one of the interesting things for me when looking at this data in particular, like at the student data, do you know what positive behaviors you're supposed to show at school? Ninety-six percent of kids said yes. Are the behavior expectations at home similar to at school? Eighty-six percent said yes. Do teachers usually follow the school-wide behavior expectations? Ninety-two percent said yes. And then when students were asked, do students usually follow the school-wide behavior expectations? Thirty-nine percent said yes. So they know what we expect, but they're acknowledging that their peers are not following the expectations to exactly what we want. So we just got this data a couple of days ago. So we're gonna, I think, have a little bit of fun kind of teasing through each of the substrands for each of these. Like that, I was reading you specific questions from the student survey under the expectations category. So on the slide that we have for you here, it's kind of aggregated together at seventy-nine percent. But we're going to spend a lot of time going through this data, both the student, parent and staff data, to get a better understanding for how we need to tweak PBIS moving forward. But it has given us a lot of interesting data points to look at.
Okay, colleagues, so Michael, this is the point where if we, if there's anything we want to specifically board focus on, I saw his direction for your treat, this is the opportunity.
This would be the right time to do that.
Okay, so I'll kick it off by asking Drew this question. How are we going to work as far as progress and students using ChatGPT this year? Because it's taking over like a tidal wave.
Yeah.
I'm hearing that colleges, kids are, everybody's writing their papers with it. People aren't even getting called on it. So I'm concerned at least at high school level and how are we going to manage that. So, you know, because it would it would falsify progress, basically, if that's true of the case.
If Dustin's going to come out of his chair, you can start.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So.
I was really hoping not to get him started.
I know, but it's it's also exciting. So I would appreciate, I would thank Drew and Kelly as well. So they they started this conversation at six twelve, because it's not even just the high school realm. It's, you know, middle school students as well are realizing that they can utilize ChatGPT or AI formats to be able to write written, even math equations. So we had teams at all locations start conversations, training, understanding it better as teachers, second semester, a spring semester this past year, to even to the point where this summer, we've even had a lot of different focus groups with not just English, social studies and science and math, teachers involved with our instructional technology coaches. So like Gretchen and Karen and Nancy are leading a lot and facilitating these. Even Julie Gold are still a part of the conversation, even though she's retired. And so what we hope to do is be able to bring to the board outside of the strategic plan, bring to the board, hopefully maybe around, we're meeting with them as a team. They're bringing recommendations to us at the beginning of August. We just set a date with them. A possible board policy around utilizing AI and ChatGPT like platforms within. So not only bringing a policy for you guys to consider as a first read, but then also those procedures and practices of the way that we are assessing students within the classroom and outside of the classroom. I think it's important for us to know that we should be able to allow students to leverage that as a tutoring opportunity, but assuming that there are false positives within every platform. So all the information that you may receive isn't always correct and you can't guarantee. But also knowing that we need to assess differently as well, right? Like we need to know that the technology is out there. So if you send a writing assignment home, understand that you have the likelihood that that kid is going to use that platform.
Right, so basically, anything at home is going to be exposed to that. Correct. What I was going to bring up to go old school, the concept of blue books. We thought about the blue book.
I remember the blue book.
And that's, that's, you can't ChatGPT your way out of a blue book exam with a pen or pencil. And hopefully, that may be considered if we can't get this thing under control. And I can't see how we can, by the way. That you take your exam written in a blue book today in the class and that's it. You can't, you can't fake that.
It's also another good reason why moving to block was the right decision. Because as we change our assessments, it's it's coming up with a quality assessment where students must perform while they're there in front of the teacher.
Because I would, I would love to, it's, I, it's not even the fact that our kid's using it, we know they are.
Right.
So we we can't wait at this point, Dustin, we can't wait. We have to implement something they want to make sure that we can properly assess students as to their progress and to their acquisition of knowledge right off the bat. Because there'd be, there'll be a huge discrepancy between a take-home written paper and an in-class blue book exam.
With phones away, often away.
That's why it's really important. It's really great that we are limiting the amount of phone access at the high school level for this reason, for the ChatGPT issue. But can you talk a little bit about the software that we have that does protect, like if there's more than like twenty percent? And she's nodding her head, so I know there's some false notifications or kids are just really good at saying, it wasn't me, it wasn't me, I, I put the timestamp, you know, I heard all of it. But do we have that? We have some sort of a sensor?
Yeah, so we have a couple of things. So we're two, thank you for No Ready, which we extended from the high school into the middle school going into the school year. They actually spent some time this summer on training and they have upcoming training to gather before they start the school year. Because it's, that software not only helps teach and reinforce grammar, sentence structure, writing techniques, but it also catches. So it also looks for inconsistencies within. So like if all of a sudden I come to you with all of a sudden this like, you know, Harvard level written, you know, term paper and yet I was getting Cs in your regular twelfth grade English class, that's a huge red flag. And that's one of the, the early conversations we had second semester last year was just looking at the writing style because you get to know your students immediately. You can, you can see also the significant shift in the kids' writing ability, right? So that's the first red flag. But then we have software six twelve now that not only reinforces what you guys are doing as students, but it also helps us catch what you're doing as students as well. And so that's, that's the first swing at that is our No Ready. Obviously, Turnitin.com is still around, so a lot of our teachers still have their judges hooked up to a lot of our Google Classes stuff and students charting anything that was written. And they, Turnitin.com, and they are able to determine plagiarism, pulling from other resources outside of what you've referenced within that paper. So we, we do have abilities to catch students, but we also want to come from a bit of a positive approach. We know that it's there, so we want you to leverage it, just like we want you to leverage your personal devices when you're outside trying to critically think. We need to know exactly how you are as a student though, within our classrooms. So exactly that limited cell phone platforms that will help us catch if all of a sudden they significantly increase the writing ability. And so we do have some platforms in place.
From the samples that we saw from Dr. Scott's presentation on the CERs, they seem to be, those are written in class, those are handwritten. And that seemed to be a tone that would help at least assess students' progress a little more honestly. If you guys will hunt for it, at least in some departments, obviously. You're not able to leverage, how to leverage that at least, at least, you know, periodically during the course of a semester to make sure that students are not meassing their work. Because it's so easy to do that.
No, one thing I would say though is that I think that absolutely we don't want kids to have access to the internet, all those things and, you know, AI tools. But you can just have, I'm sure there's ways for them to have word processing formats, but not be able to access anything electronically. Because you will hand tie a lot of kids who really write their best by typing. I mean, a lot of kids aren't learning spelling anymore. So for them to like have to just, I mean, this is a whole other conversation, but, I know. But I'm saying, I would say it would be better to allow kids to be able to type and use word processing features such as rearranging things, because we all write better with those modern tools. And then, but they, it could be such that they can't access internet while they're typing that up.
And we do, so I, what I'm going to say in these two is we aren't able to lock students out of the browser. So when they're taking assessments like the CASP and all those types of things, we can lock their computers down and so they aren't able, it is just, it becomes a word processor then. So they are able to.
We can, but do.
Yeah, I.
That's a lot harder than mine.
We have our teachers, it's GoGuardian.
Yeah.
And so it monitors and they can see everything. It alerts the teachers from their own computer can shut the stuff down on the kids' computers.
It's great, it's out there, but without modern typing and cell check, they will, they'll be on the floor. They do.
Can you explain something to me? This is a question for Noah. How is the ChatGPT that different than when we were using the Internet ten or fifteen years ago? So I might be missing.
It's actually constructing and writing paper.
You put in your prompt.
Putting the prompt, that's all it works.
I mean, that I understand, I get it. But I still do believe that technology has been available to the students for twenty-five years now, you know?
To plagiarize, yes, but not to construct entire papers?
I could do it in ten minutes and so could most kids. I think that you, the kids can piecemeal something together. I don't see the new technology being.
The old detection technology?
A language model that actually is different. It actually has algorithms that is different from what you and I did, you know, fifteen years ago, where you look at pieces that come to you. It actually has algorithms to predict how, what the layout is of a persuasive essay or what the layout is of a narrative.
I'm just going to get that.
It's, yeah, just like all the writers on Strike in Hollywood, because a lot of, that open source language model is being used to write scripts and scenes. And that wasn't available when you and I were doing it fifteen years ago. That's the difference.
It can write a play for a kid, for example, not just piecemealing parts of things from the internet into a recertifier. Like it's actually, it creates music.
It does it in seconds.
And then temporary for your vacation. I mean, there's like, it just.
There's practical applications for it. It's not the enemy, it's just, it's going to hinder our children's success.
I mean, I would suggest that we can continue that conversation and that we are looking at policy.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to evolve and I also believe it can keep changing.
It will.
And we do need to.
It's always going to be a step ahead around.
Right. I, I think we need policy and we also need what the practices for teaching with it and without.
Right. The conversation is happening six twelve at the start of the school year, but we are going to bring stuff to the Board of Education around policy for consideration. In addition, just updates of what we did as a working group. And then as it modifies and molds, we'll continue that conversation. But you should see something at the start of the school year. We're meeting with them at the beginning of August, I think, like August second.
Yeah, and I was speaking with Karen this morning, like we're going to put in preliminary language about AI in the Norman Guide as well as cell phone policy. Like, and we're going to probably have to update the Norman Guide when those two things become more codified, but we're putting it in preliminary order.
So my suggestion would be for this second of this strategic plan that we add in a policy practice around AI and ChatGPT chat, even if it's ongoing, that just so that we really put it as a focus of something that we are going to be continuing to think about and address. I think the other item for me is I would.
Mary, you mean as a goal, as its own goal?
I was going to say which section?
I would put it in, I, I would work it into your strategic plan where you think it is best mentioned, but I think it should be mentioned so that we, when we have our updates, we're going to be addressing it and it will remind you throughout the year that we are putting that together and we have a plan. So that's not just, yes, we're talking about it, but we don't ever put formalize the plan or formalize policy. So I, I'm just trying to put structure around the thinking so that we, we formalize things. So to me, that's what the strategic plan does, is it gives us that framework to formalize what our goals are, what our thinking is. So the same with the measuring progress with the NWEA. I think we should include in that how you're going to be measuring it, how you're training it, like, you know, how you're doing the, your data conversations around it so that you really have formalized the use of that. And that then you can also evaluate if it's actually working for you this year or if you're starting to see what that progress is. So I would put that, I would add that more specifically in here. In terms of the rankings and whether that's useful to you to look at what that ranking is, I would like you to come back and make a recommendation for what would be better. Because we have niche and the other ways to rank and, you know, these reports. So how do we, how do we address that kind of ranking? And what's the best way for us to look at it? That one addresses from the outside how people look at us? And two, how is it instructive for us for what, how we, you know, do our program and our curriculum program? The other item that I think is not in here and I think would be important, and it may be in here underneath, but it's matriculation. We talked about that last year and I don't think we really addressed it again. Like, you know, what are our thoughts and feelings about that? How do we, what's the narrative we want to have around how we matrix and matriculate? Where and why and what are the trends and where do we want to be? So I, I think that should be in there as well. Because to me, I think that academic performance, ranking, where are our kids going? Are we achieving the goals that, you know, we set as our mission and vision? Are we achieving that? These are our, our high school students and they're leaving, so are we getting there, right? So I think these help us, give us the benchmarks to do that. For the behavior piece and the cell phone piece, this is to me like more the culture of what's going on in school that provides the environment for teaching and educational excellence. And so somewhere in there, I think we have to put what that is, if it's the cell phone use and how we're implementing the behavior plan, however that is, I think we should be, we should identify that in here. And what those benchmarks are, or what does it, what does it look like? How do you tell parents? How do you tell the kids? How are we holding it accountable so that when we come back, we have something to measure, right? So yes, this is how we introduced it. This is how we introduced the NWEA. This is how we introduced the behavior policies. This is how we introduced cell phone policy and reinforced it. And here's, you know, here's where it worked and didn't. Maybe we didn't get the parents on board or maybe the kids didn't get on board or what, and how we need to improve that so that when we meet again in November, we can say, we didn't launch it right. Or we launched it great, but it seems to have lost focus now, so what do we need to do? It gives us that conversation to look at this.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
One of the concerns, I think, with our previous strategic plan was how large it was and how many different things we tried to.
Accomplish.
Accomplish. I think you just listed three or four things that you would like to see added, whether it's to a particular goal or as a goal itself. Are there any things that you think that we should sunset and move away from?
My concern is if we're going to move it, if we're going to go from, you know, eight or ten goals and now we're at fourteen, fifteen, and if we add more, like, I guess I just want some direction.
Right, I guess I would ask you, I mean, for me, I feel like these are just the broader categories of what we're looking at. And then these are those subcategories, like we're looking at performance. Does performance mean, you know, in terms of scoring? The scores of performance or measuring performance? I think those, to me, fall under academic performance. So if you want to come back to us and say, here's how we want to refine this, right? These are better measurable things for us and, and these are the categories we've broken it down into, be it academic performance, school culture, our behaviors.
Like school discipline with cell phones, so it could fall into.
Right, you may make it a broad category and these are the items underneath. Or it could be, you could make it a very specific goal. But I think we've identified all these things as important issues. So for me, it's how do you want to then formulate that for your benchmarks? It's really, it's for us, but it's also for you so that you know, like, these are the benchmarks we want to hit because this is how we're going to get to educational excellence. This is how we're going to get students that are prepared to, you know, to go out into the world. This is how we're gonna get students that are prepared to, you know, to go out into the world. So, you know, if you see some of these benchmarks are really not a benchmark that's going to be as important to get you there, then come back and tell us this is, we'd rather be focusing our attention on tracking a different metric.
Like, I mean, I'll just right off the jump, I'm not particularly interested in monitoring cellphone data for the strategic plan and academic excellence.
Where's cellphone data?
Well, you were just mentioning that as part of the behavior plan.
Oh, no, I mean, more like that we introduce a policy or, you know, to me, that's fine with me that you're not monitoring cellphone data. I don't need to turn it up. I'm thinking more of introducing culture. So how, is it having kids sign a handbook at the beginning of the year, which is what you just mentioned?
Right.
Is that part of that culture and in that are those things perhaps? Do you see what I'm saying? But, but did we get the kids on board with, these are your expectations for your behavior? It could be included in that, but I don't need to track.
And maybe through some of the things that we're talking about on the last set of goals, they're all yeses.
Mm-hmm.
Those could be, if they're completed, we can take them out, mission accomplished.
So SOS, we feel like.
Redefine, you know, redefine the goal or take the goal out and put something else. So that way you're not overloaded.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on the paper, Drew? Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for VMS, the two goals that we met, we kind of already talked about in the spring, so I'm gonna focus on the three that are not met or in progress. Same thing kind of with Drew, I'm gonna be going back and forth with this monitor and this screen. So for the CDR, we did not meet our initial goal of students scoring a seven or better on the CDRs. This will be a continued goal for our staff and for VMS in general. Couple of the things that we did post our meeting last spring with you guys after we had the data from all four content areas that did the CDRs was really look at our success criteria and what is it that we are wanting to accomplish with the CDRs? And one of the main things was really getting students to be at that place of meeting the expectations and our current rubric and our current scoring didn't help answer that question. Did the students meet our expectation for the right? So one of the things that we worked on over the summer was updating our success criteria and completely revamping the rubric. And so what that means is that this goal during our admin conference this week, I'm gonna work with my team to revise this goal. It's gonna look very different. We're still gonna be focusing on that academic portion of the CDRs, but how we measure it is gonna be different. So that will be updated. We have continued professional development plan for the teachers. One of the things that came out of last year was we know we're really strong with our claims. Students got that down. We don't need to spend more time teaching that. We're like moderate on the evidence. If they're, they're decent, even in that, it's that reasoning component, that critical thinking component. And so our, the four professional development days, two in the fall, two in the spring, and we're gonna be targeting that reasoning component with our teachers and really hitting that in our classroom. And so that's our focus for that. We'll continue with the release days for scoring. So similar to how we'll have the data chats with the NWEA, what was really helpful for the teachers was to score together and then to have those conversations about how students were doing. And I know, you know, my math teachers, they went last. This upcoming year, they're gonna go second quarter and for my math teacher, and we'll see it, you know, and our math scores are not great. It was an aha moment for my math teachers during that scoring day. They had a recognition of, oh, we didn't meet the mark and, oh, we didn't even teach that. And we wouldn't have been able to get that without that scoring day, sitting with their colleagues and looking at student work together and talking about it. So we're gonna continue those scoring days for the teachers so that they can continue to get those aha moments about their teaching practices. And then math is going, they were very adamant that they wanted to go sooner in the year so that they could get their aha moments sooner rather than later. So we made that adjustment with them. So that's our, our CDR goal. We're not getting rid of that. I think for our teachers, what's really important is that we stay focused on instruction and we stay focused on a few key things rather than trying to spread them so thin and like, let's just try everything and see what sticks. Let's focus on a few things so they can do it really well. And I know that my teachers are looking forward to continuing that work and growing and improving. We're not giving up. Just maybe we didn't do it perfectly this first year. We're not giving up, we're gonna keep pushing. I think that sends the message to the students too, like, oh, we're not giving up just because we didn't meet the goal and we're gonna try to get it.
Resist.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, then our next one where we did not meet, and I kind of feel like instead of putting a no, I probably wish I should have put an in progress because with our CASP data, it's always gonna be in progress because we're always gonna wanna get to a hundred percent of exceeding, exceeding those standards. And so we're gonna always keep working towards that. So I, I wanna put in progress for that one. We, you know, for the middle school, because we test all three grade levels, it was very mixed. So we had some scores that improved and then some that went down. So for example, in sixth grade ELA, we went down. So that's gonna be a conversation with my sixth grade team of, why did we go down from eight percent to this meeting or exceed these standards?
I'm putting in the next one.
Oh, so sorry, I didn't click the remote. My bad. I did it on my computer in front of me.
Yeah.
And then, but in sixth grade math, we went up by three percent for that group. So not that that's a great increase, but it is an increase. My seventh grade team, ELA went up by eight percent and then math went up by five percent. So what I wanna do is I wanna talk to my seventh grade team, like, what is it that you guys are doing to increase your scores? And when I look at last year's data and compared it to a couple of years ago, like, seventh grade seems to be really strong and so I wanna harness that strength from that group of teachers. And then eighth grade was a struggle. And part of that is just eighth grade, that time of year is a really hard time for eighth graders. It's when like hormones hit and they're like anxious about high school and just kinda messy. But we gotta do something. Math went down by seven percent and that's not great.
Kelly, on our copies, we have two sixth grades.
Yes.
Seven.
I'm so sorry.
I think one sixth grade.
Do you see it? I could show you what I have.
I, I see it.
Is it the lower one is seventh grade?
No, that's just a mistake. I just put the wrong, I just put the wrong image in.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We were talking about the fact that we don't have the information yet, as I understand, and yet here's something that shows by.
So it's embargoed data, so we can't.
It's what?
Embargoed data.
What does that mean?
We're not allowed to officially share it out, which is why they have to collect those packets from you because it's not official data to be.
So we do have the information at this time. I've been told that we just have it, that we don't have it.
We do. We hear there's. It's not official yet. There, there's several districts that are being contacted with irregularities and so they're taking.
Okay, so that just clears it up, that we internally do know now how our kids did because we have it right now.
Yes, we.
So it's not like.
Yeah, based on our calculation. So we.
Well, I guess I understand that.
Scores and be able to build this out.
If there's a change, it'll be very slight.
No, I, I just wanna make sure that I understand correctly.
Yeah.
Because that's not the impression that I got. So this clears it up. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please? Just cause I, I would like to know, for the seventh grade ELA, can you kindly provide me the total of the met and exceeded percentage for when they were fifth graders?
For current seventh grade or sixth grade?
Because sixth grade, you, we've gotten there two times, right?
So for my, so for.
Last year's seventh grade.
Last year's seventh graders, I have their sixth grade scores, not fifth grade.
Got it, okay.
I can do it as fifth grade.
Yeah, I, I just don't have that.
And that is low.
Well, all I'm saying is, if you could kindly at some point provide the chart that was supposed to go in there and then we'll be good.
Yeah, so for seventh grade ELA, as sixth graders, they were sixty percent met or exceeded. And then for as seventh graders, they were sixty-eight percent met or exceeded.
Got it, thank you. And in math?
In math, as sixth graders, they were forty-three percent. And then in seventh grade, they were forty-eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So that's our.
Benchmark.
Our benchmark in some ways of how can we replicate what was done here?
Correct.
In the other grades?
Correct.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I make, you gotta finish then I'd like.
Okay. And then the last goal where we're kind of in progress was our SEL goal, which kind of encompasses our school culture, our student behavior, all of that. And so we're definitely in progress with that. And very similar to what Mr. Stewart said in terms of our students, and I had six hundred and twenty-seven students actually complete the survey, which was almost all of our students, which was great. But in terms of do they know their behavior expectations, ninety-six percent of the students said yes. They know what's expected of them. In terms of do students usually follow the school-wide behavior expectations? Very similar, thirty-six percent said yes. That's their perception of it. When we look at the data, it's three to five percent of our students that are not following the behavior expectations. But, you know, to, like Mr. Stewart said, we wanna dive into these specific questions. Our overall kind of expectations, it was a seventy-four percent, so our students know. Our teachers know, our teachers are expecting it. Which is really positive to see that that percentage of students, they know what's expected of them. And so the work that we are doing in terms of, here's how we're supposed to behave in the classroom, here's how we're supposed to behave at break in lunch, they know. And so now it's just taking it to that next level with the students.
Thank you.
In terms of our previous goal, I did not mention for our CASP to increase and kind of work on that CASP figure. I apologize, I jumped right ahead to our next goal. But like Mr. Stewart and Mr. Seaman said, we have the NWEA. Our teachers helped in that process and choosing it, they're on board with it. I know my math teachers have been asking since I started for something to help them with it. So they're very much looking forward to it and that's the group we absolutely want on board. So that's good. We also have, and I'm not sure if Mr. Stewart mentioned it, but Ed Services has scheduled six through twelve articulation days between all the departments. So my math teachers will get to meet the high school math teachers, English, history, foreign language. And so we're gonna have more cohesive planning between sixth and twelfth grade and those are already on the calendar. My teachers are gonna get the calendars, we're gonna know when to put their stuff days in. So that's a step in the right direction. We also, I know I've talked about Alex, which is a math online program. Last year was our first year implementing that support for our students that did not meet the standards in math. And it was kind of an optional thing for students. We have a lot of parents that emailed and said, I don't want my kid doing it. It was free, we were giving prizes. And he just did twenty minutes a day, four days a week and we still couldn't get people to do it. And one of the things that came out of my, actually my principal advisory council was to move those kids into the same advisory. And I went to the union, made sure like there's not gonna be any contractual issues with that and they're good to go. And so since we now have who scored what, we can easily place, okay, this group of kids, they're not met. They're gonna go in the same advisory and all that teacher has to do is open your computer, do your Alex for the weekend. So it's no longer optional for them and so we don't have to worry about parents saying, yeah, I don't need them to do the twenty minutes at home. We're still gonna do the rewards and kind of, you know, monitor their accomplishing that. Have a teacher that, that's one of her roles is to just monitor that student data. She will not have an advisory, so she can pop into them and kind of work with the kids. So moving that one forward, we're gonna continue some of the things that we were doing, like the lunch tutoring, the after-school tutoring, that's free for kids. We have also, as an admin team, worked on improving our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support, our data collection for that and our data monitoring. We meet quarterly to go over student grades and data and all of that stuff. And so we're just improving, streamlining and growing that process. And then working with Justin for this upcoming summer to work on some stronger summer interventions.
How about at, at the middle school when the kids are simply getting Cs, Ds and Fs? Just as like a baseline? So what's happening there with the interventions? You know what I mean?
So every quarter, we do, we call them grade level meetings. And the week before the grade level meeting, our teachers fill out, we call them green slips. And they put what the student grades are, what interventions they've tried in the classroom and then what their current concerns are. What we added last year and we're gonna continue adding is an option for them to choose a yellow slip. So it's not just the kids that are failing, but do you have kids that are like those bubble kids that we need to monitor and push? And so that we just added at the end of the year and so that's something we're gonna be working on this year. It's those, what we would call the bubble kids.
I mean, I can share from a parent perspective that it's a little bit hard to get in at the middle school and partner with your child's teacher from an academic perspective. And I don't say that as a slight in any way, I'm just letting you know, it's hard to figure out what is the problem. And I don't know what the solution is there, but when, as a parent, you're getting the grades on Aries and you reach out and I just think that there should be an increased communication. And I would bet that there's a correlation between the kids that are getting Cs, Ds and it's not just the F kids. The Cs and Ds are also inadequate, in my opinion, certainly the Ds. And I do know a lot of parents who were trying to connect and could not make the connection of how do we, how do we figure this out? And ultimately, you put your hands up in the air and you're like, okay, you know? And so I really, I really encourage communication. And I, I would love as a parent, if my student was not getting a C or better, to be pulled in and to have a meeting and to really figure it out. At the eighth grade level, when you have, the students are not doing well, they also then cannot move into the honors and AP track. And I know a ton of parents that are very disappointed by that, but, but there was, we couldn't get in, you know? And I think I'm a pretty communicative, articulate parent. So if I couldn't get in, then I would say that for the parents who are not as communicative or articulate, it's impossible. And I would just ask if you could add to your plan the engaging in the parent community and having the teachers reach out to the parent. If it's a behavioral issue, I would love to hear about it. You know, not the week before the field trip, but weeks before that. I would like to be my teacher's partner in my child's education. And I don't know that I have that opportunity. And I'm not saying, I don't say that as a referendum on anyone, but I do think that a missed opportunity is with the parents. I know a lot of parents whose kids got Cs, Ds and Fs in math at the eighth grade level and they are so disappointed by it. And they could have been a resource, you know? They could have been a resource. So please figure out a way that you're gonna reach out to the underperforming children's parents. I think that would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. In terms of our last goal, the SEL goal, a couple of things that we're working towards this year is implementing a behavior pledge. We will be doing that at our registration date. So parents and students will be coming and that will be one of the stations they go to to sign a behavior pledge, very similar to like our community pledge that we have.
Do you have a draft of that?
Yes.
Okay. But it's gonna be, so it will be implemented starting from?
August eighth is our registration date for seventh and eighth graders.
Beautiful.
And we'll have the grade level administrator sitting at that table doing that behavior pledge.
And can you communicate it to the parents too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a separate communication, separate from anything else related to registration, like, hey, this is station number what? Please make sure you have reviewed our handbook and reviewed this pledge. We'll be asking you to sign it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. And then we will be sharing our data with our staff quarterly. Um, and then we will be, um, sharing our data with our staff quarterly, our behavior data. That was one of the things that kind of came out of our conversations with the teachers union, and so, um, and, and the teachers want to help. So they just need to know, and so that's an easy thing to do. Um, we talked with, um, Ms. Collins-Williams about our PBIS survey and redoing it during the year so that we're not just getting it now, but we can get it mid-year as well and kind of make corrections mid-year as we did. We kind of know what we need to do now based on the, the results we got, but we want to monitor it in the middle to see, are we hitting that mark? Um, we do at PBMS, uh, we call our Bulldog Day, it's the first day of school. We're, um, planning this year to do a two-point-oh, like a little mini-stude conference in October, which aligns with our anti-bullying month. And so we already have a plan to do, um, kind of resetting with our behavior expectations. We have an assembly plan, and then we have a community service project plan, and, um, we'll pepper out on that day. So it'll be like a, a mini-conference for our whole school, um, and just kind of another check, and they get the first day. But then like you kind of forget, and they need a big reminder again, and October is kind of the month where they forget, so we're doing that in October. Um, we are also implementing referrals towards our outdoor trips. So eighth grade, um, we do that with our promotion, and our eighth grade activities is if you get X amount of referrals, then you're placed on probation, and you have to earn your way back. We're going to be implementing that same structure with our outdoor trips, starting day one with our students, so that, um, should help. And then, um, we are so excited for our Bulldog Day Center, like the construction, like it's so spectacular. And so that's really going to help, um, set the tone and kind of just shift culture on our campus to have that dedicated space. It's going to send a message to our students that that's important to us as a school and as a PBMS community. So I think that physical building is just itself going to make a huge impact.
But we currently have a Bulldog Center?
Yes.
And a full-time MFT for?
A hundred percent, a hundred percent, yes.
Because I don't want that community to think that we're now just starting this.
No, no, it's the buil- the building itself.
I'd like to, are you finished with your recording?
I'm done, thank you.
And I would like to go back to the CDR performance situation, because that's something that's kind of disappointing to me. Not, um, first of all, the fact that that was the first year that it was implemented, the expectation that kids would get certain, you set those standards.
Yeah.
And I don't think you should be disappointed by because of that, that was your first year on that.
Thank you.
I'm concerned about the, um, whatever they're being given as to make their CER, whether they claim their evidence and their reasoning for it. Um, is that this was such a beginning thing, does NWEA have anything in there when they're, uh, helping with the kids that are having trouble? Is there a component in the NWEA for this particular plan or this program?
I mean, I couldn't answer that question without looking more into it, I don't, I don't know.
Does, I mean, NWEA, we're, we're, we're zeroing in on, uh, these three items, which I took, be very honest, translate to the whole hypothesis rule in science, you know? It's all about that to me, being a scientist. And I, I, and, you know, to use it in math and history, I mean, yes, I can, the correlation is there. But we're using the English, the, the NWEA is zeroing in on math and, um, English.
And science.
And science.
Yeah. I think the difference in SMIG with China is that the NWEA is looking at standards and measuring the progress on, for students on the particular standards for that grade level. Versus the CDR is more about that critical thinking, reasoning component, which is part of why we've updated our success criteria to be more about meeting that expectation of the critical reasoning rather than like a seven out of ten.
Well, as I say, it was the first year, and you're getting your feet wet with it, and learning that, but not to set, change the standards or anything, but still to set them high for the kids to do that.
A hundred percent.
I, I believe, um, so, and, and, and that's one thing that I, um, was also questioning. I, I will tell you that I was a little bit disappointed that the staff, I'm being very honest right now, in responding to the, uh, questionnaire that you did, that only twenty-six of your teachers.
Hundred percent.
I am so disappointed by that, it leaves me mind-boggling that they didn't have time to fill that out. And I mean, to say that right now, I find that deplorable, I mean, I just, I, I think it's wrong. And I, I mean, parents, that's one thing, but you've got a captive audience of the teachers, and they should have filled it out. And I feel that, and I, I think I saw that also at the high school, that I was very disappointed in their response to the questionnaire. So I think that, uh, and without those responses, I, how can you really justify the answers when you get, well, you got eighty-six percent or whatever? I can't see that without my, my, the not, I can't read it.
Yeah, I, I think that that's, that's a fair thing to say, uh, but I also want to say too that, you know, this is, um, as Dr. Skan said earlier, about like sharing even disciplined data back with staff so that they see it. This is something that you go back and you share with your staff, the twenty-six of you did this.
I mean, I'm being very honest.
No, it's a very fair thing to say, but I think that you, you get more staff to buy into these things if you then repeatedly share the data back with your staff. Knowing that you care enough to share this back with your, like, you'll see those numbers go up.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Well, and then in our, in our, in my site leadership meeting and in staff meeting, when we're talking about our next steps, it's based on the data we get. And then the conversation with the, the teachers that come, and like, "Why aren't we doing this?" You had an opportunity, and, and so we have to push back on them.
I, yeah.
But it's a communication cycle though, so when, when staff knows that it's not just a one-and-done, here, we just want you to take the survey, that, that's why you have to share results back.
Okay, well, that's, that's as I say, I mean, that was disappointing to me, so I just wanted to share that.
Sure, absolutely.
Anything else?
I have a question, um, regarding the interventions and probation to mention. Do you have log groups for that program, and is there data available on what, like the specifics, I guess, of what interventions we're doing?
Yes, so we have, um, our lunchtime tutoring, our after-school tutoring, we do check-in, check-outs with students, we have some intervention classes. We're going to be starting another, um, kind of gen ed, um, general studies class for students. Um, we've got a social skills class after school, um, try to leave it, all the other ones that we do. Uh, and so part of what we're doing is, so last year we had this massive spreadsheet where we were like keeping track of everything, and it was like a lot, and really hard to kind of analyze the data. And so this summer, um, actually, Ms. Perkins, one of my assistant principals, went through, that's kind of her strength and her background, is, um, multi-tiered systems of support, so she really looked through all that data and streamlined our tracking system for our students that would be on intervention. And we're going to be able to monitor them from day one to then all the rest of the quarters throughout the year and monitor what interventions we're doing. Is it working, is it not working? And part of that monitoring, this speaks to what Judy was sharing with the communication with parents, is we have a log for, um, when the parents have been notified of, you've identified your kid needs some support, here's the support we're suggesting, whether it be their lunch tutoring, the after-school tutoring, and sharing that with the parents. We're signing your kid up for this intervention, and then we monitor whether the kids go or not, and then we're communicating with the parents. Your kiddo's not showing up to the tutoring link.
Thank you.
I think one of the biggest problems with really well-intentioned interventions is that the, the children who most need to go are least motivated to show up. I mean, like asking a kid at lunchtime to go and do math who's already bad at math?
Yeah.
Is really a hard cry, and then they, the, the parent as well is probably not, you know, hears the kid's complaint, but, "Oh, well, I have to go during lunch, and I certainly don't want to go after school."
Yeah.
And then the other issue is that often the teacher who is a part of that intervention isn't like really, I have found just in general, not supervised so well. Like, not at all like how the grade level teachers are supervised. So there's, there's not like, I find there's not a high, um, standard that's set for the performance of that particular intervention teacher. So between issues of attendance and not, and motivation, and the level of oversight, um, and, um, standards that are placed on that particular professional, it ends up being like an elective, and it just does not, it does not deliver the results of support that those kids need. Can you speak to that at all?
So for, um, our, like, after-school and lunch tutoring, the lunch tutoring, the kids that we are assigning to it, we call it mandatory, it's mandatory. And the teachers will radio us or call us and say, "So and so didn't show up," and we go find them and then get them there. Um, and then for the after-school tutoring, we are monitoring the kids that we've assigned to it, and then we're communicating with parents that they're not showing up. Uh, but of course it's open for every kid, so we've got random kids showing up too. For our intervention class for our gen ed students, it's going to be new this year. Um, and I have four content teachers that'll be teaching it. I have a math, science, English, and history teacher, it's going to be the same period. They already started needing math string to work on the curriculum for it. Um, it's going to be structured like goal setting, monitoring their Aries, plus time for them to get targeted help. So the reason why it's the same period is, let's say that seventh grade math has a test on Wednesday. Well, during seventh period when the class is, all the little seventh graders can go to the math teacher, and then the other kids can spread out to the other teachers, and that group can get targeted support on that. And so that's why we have the four content teachers, so we can target all the areas. And we have four teachers that are kind of PLCing together to really make this class a strong class as opposed to just a standard.
And then the other question I have to do with interventions in general is do they do like a baseline test to find out where their baseline is on the bas scale? And then a post-test to see how was the intervention? Because if they just showed up, and, "Yeah, they kind of can't," we don't know.
Correct, and that's where like the NWEA is going to come into play, our Alex, all of those are going to measure our students' baseline, and then we're going to monitor. And one of the things really is imperative for interventions is that it's fluid. And Mr. Waters will kill me if I, this is the reality of what we have to do for kids is, once they've earned their way out, we have to move them out and put them into another elective, and then we have to move the other kids in that are showing that they need it. And so it's a fluid class, and that's not a typical practice in secondary, um, but it's necessary, and it's something that we work for.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Skan. Um, we go over elementary?
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, so, um, we had done our student planning together this year, and, um, just because we have different boards, we're going to separate it out, um, as we present. So I'm presenting first just because I'm a professor. This, this is us together, it was a little C P mix, we can keep it up, and then the next slide was just the part in the middle. And, um, we met three goals, clarity and basic date offering, and, um, a hundred percent of our C P H I students receiving social emotional line direct or counselor. So I'm not really going to touch on those, I already touched on those three. Um, the first slide is, we will go over control, is, um, some slides around our class scores. So third grade, and you can just see seventy-three percent in ELA and were exceeded or met, and in math seventy-nine. If you guys are first-time test takers, you can make pretty good work for other little people. Uh, this is fourth grade, um, in the right column you can see the twenty-two data. And there's seventy-eight percent in ELA that are met or exceeded standards, and eighty-seven percent in math. Um, and you can see their cohort data from the year before, so that's an increase from their third grade scores of seventy-seven percent and sixty-nine percent. And then, um, to go to fifth grade, um, our fifth grade scores in ELA, um, overall seventy-three percent were met and exceeded in ELA, and sixty-one percent in math. So, um, that's also a, um, a drop in both, a slight drop in both, from seventy-nine percent in fourth, as fourth graders, and seventy-four percent, uh, in math as fourth graders. So this is the area that we always like see a decline, right? So, um, I definitely know that there's a big decline, especially in math, and I'm worried about that, thirteen points that may be like, uh, one of the lowest places. What I do want to say to like you and to show you is that like last year, we had our fifth grade students, only fifty percent of our fifth grade students were met or exceeded standards. So, and that was a huge drop from their fourth grade, which was eighty-one percent the year before. So the students who are now sixth graders that, um, Dr. Skan has that have just tested in sixth grade, their fifth grade scores, only fifty percent of the Hawthorne students were met or exceeded, and their fourth grade scores were at eighty-one percent. So that decline was also what we looked at hugely, and what we looked at is like what were the sixth grade scores overall? So we know that we need to take those fourth grade scores and keep them and move them up, right? Like that's always our goal of the, um, seventy-four percent of those fourth graders. Um, but when we're also looking at it as like the work that we did and the attention that we paid to managing the bleed, like stopping the bleed from, from the year before, we did an excellent job of containing that, and what we did around just overall growth, we moved that number from fifty percent to sixty-one percent. And just for some context, um, the year before's test scores, the twenty-twenty-one test scores, the fifth graders were at fifty-two percent, um, met or exceeded standards for math. So, um, that, that's not cohort data, that's just fifth grade data of the year, of the year, of the year, that we've really worked to, um, drill down on some of that, um, those pieces, and some of those conceptual-based pieces that are so important in this grade math. Um, and the teachers worked really hard this year, which like, that will never happen again, we will never be in the fifth year again. They really worked hard to make sure that they're working on that.
What did they do that really addressed, I mean, what did you find is, what was one of the factors?
Well, some of it was like talking about that, some of it was about conceptual-based work. Some of it was ST Math that we brought in, and it said, "There's a gamification piece around that." That was, um, breaking up, um, what is just an algorithm and what's the concept base behind it. Some of it's the work that we've been doing with partners in practice, who's that, um, the math group that we've brought in, and thinking about like bringing up, um, how do we think about math? Because what it asks us to do is to explain how we're thinking about math, um, not just to answer those questions of just rote algorithm, right? You can do the algorithm, and then they like break it up for you and say like, "How do you know that you did that right?" And, um, those pieces are like shown in multiple ways, so if you've memorized something, you can't really address that in the same way. Um, I want to just, there, I don't have a slide for it, but the ca- the cast data, we don't, we didn't have individual student data from last year, but we had only fifty-eight percent of our Hawthorne students that were met or exceeded, um, some of those science standards, and this year we have sixty-five percent. So I didn't have a slide for that, I apologize. But we're on our way, and we'll be able to see where it is that we're, which students there were, they were, and we'll be able to disaggregate the data when we have a little bit more information. Yeah?
Oh, sorry, read it?
No, no, go ahead, I'm just going to go to the next slide, but go ahead.
Going back to what, uh, Dustin was saying earlier about memorization, repetition, um, I could be wrong, but there is a perception that we have moved away from the homework model. Um, and I do know a lot of parents who would love to have a little bit more homework sent home for the repetition and the memorization. And I am one of them too, I would love to have that. Um, don't get me wrong, the concept that the child goes to school, and so much is accomplished during the school day, that when they come home, it could just be for activities and sports and stuff like that, um, is great. You know, I, I love that the, um, school is taking on the entire educational responsibility. Um, but based on my own education and my own work and whatever success I have seen in my life, I do believe that there is a place for homework, and I do think that again, as I said earlier, there is a place for the parent invol- involvement for academic success. And, um, you can maybe make it optional if that's a concern, if you're worried about some parents pushing back. Um, but I, I would be interested in more homework, and what are your thoughts on that? And, and I'm not saying, and I don't send my kid home with four hours of homework to watch.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask one more thing. So in our CASP meeting, we actually had a long conversation about this, because there's some thought around like, do you do things over and over and over again, and like make like grooves in your brain about like how to do something, right? Like, how do you do it if you're doing it exactly the same way? Versus like, um, the movement of education number toward, toward Common Core is actually like, how can you figure this out without us giving you the way to do it, that groove? And then you build your own groove based on conceptual understanding of something, right? That's how it's worked. So if you are in the philosophy that like you need to do it over and over and over and over again, then it makes sense that we give like twenty-five, thirty, a hundred math problems, then it makes sense that we give like 25, 30, 100 math problems, which I know that I definitely had like those multiplication problems. But if you're moving toward like, if I can show you that I understand how to do this in eight, why do I need to do it in 25, right? So those are the conversations that we're having all the time, both with like our leadership teams, that's whoa, with our Ed Services team, and with PAC.
But maybe we can find a more happy medium, so it's not sending home 100 problems. It's not an abuse of power that I'm looking for, you know? But I just think that a little bit more could help, and it's a little bit light. And I can see with my own students at home, that having that involvement with me and having the repetition causes for them, for the light bulb to go on, and for the thread for what they learned in the day to be continued in the evening. I mean, we know that, you know, like when you sleep, you automatically lose X% of whatever you learned an hour ago. So I think that if the, based on what you were sharing, that the test that we scored low on, one of them, is about memorization. And so let's memorize a little bit more, you know?
We, but I'm against, because we absolutely can take, no, no, we.
But I'm letting you know that as parents, we would like to help in the education of our children. And we see that the children are not scoring that great. And so we would like to assist you. And the best way to make that happen is to assign a little bit more homework. Not two hours, three hours, maybe 15, you know? They used to say like, for every grade level, it's 10 minutes of homework, or something like that.
Yeah, there's the board.
You know, some type of a.
It's still board policy, that there's a maximum amount of homework.
Yeah.
So. Fifth graders get 15 minutes, fourth graders get 40 minutes.
It's not that I want the fifth graders to be taking an AP exam at home, you know? But I do think that there needs to be redundancy, support, reminders. Maybe parents at home can explain it to their own student in another way. But really, this is about a partnership between the families and educators.
But Judy, there's a lot of variables in that statement that we can't account for. Like, will the parents participate in, you know, you're saying you will, but you can't speak for a lot of parents. And also, people learn differently. So whereas repetition may help one learner, it may be a complete waste of time for another and cause more frustration and turn a student off of the subject matter.
Well, the numbers don't lie, and we need to improve.
Yeah, that we do.
You know, and so doing nothing is not the answer.
I didn't say that.
You know, and I can't account for how other parents are going to respond. But I would like the opportunity to have homework with my student, so I can help them. And also, it might enable me to communicate with the teacher about where I am assessing my child, and where I am seeing that there is a gap in their understanding or their interpretation. So again, I think that we need to capitalize on the partnership between parent, educator, and student.
And I think we all agree too, Judy, is it's not maybe just the word homework, but it's more about the opening up of the transparency of what's happening in the classroom to provide the opportunity for the reinforcement.
Yes.
Or the practice at home, whether that be fun activities, being able to be sent home. Like with Maggie and Sarah Craig, they partnered with the Math Fun Night this past year. And they've already on the books put a literacy night and an additional math night that they've already been prepping for, but even extending into the middle school. We totally, loud and clear is around, for our strategic plan going into the 23-24s, we gotta work on that parent engagement piece and leveraging their expertise in the practice reinforcement and support of what is happening on our campuses.
We have a lot of highly educated parents in a plethora of fields.
Yeah.
And so I think that's an untapped resource for us.
Yeah.
So one of the things that's a little bit different between End of the League and iReady is that iReady has a component of that where the kids can interact. There's like a regular like learning piece around doing a lesson and then exploring with different pieces after they've taken a diagnostic, both in language arts and math. And so that'll be accessible from home all the time. And we're expecting that there'll be like a number of minutes that needs to be assessed or completed.
Is that on the computer?
It is on the computer, yeah.
Can we send the kids, I don't think most parents wanna sit down in front of a laptop with their student. But I do think that parents can, if they get a couple worksheets, make that happen. So I really think that the mode that you ask the parents to participate is also very relevant. I personally don't know if I synthesize things when I type them as much as when I write them down. So that's another consideration. I do think that there is a big argument for sending some packets home. You know, you can send them on Monday, so that if we have dual working parents, you know, by Friday, they've had enough time to work on the material. But I do think that there needs to be a little bit more homework as a foundational issue.
Do you teach math, or are you talking about like writing well?
Well, whatever we're not scoring well on. And even if we were scoring well, I come from the mindset of every day, you can do 1% better than the day before. So for me, this is not like a referendum on anything, it's just you can always improve. Even if we were in the 80s, I would say, let's go for the 90s. If we were in the 90s, I would say, let's try to get to 100. So for me, this is not a punishment for anyone. This is just the way I operate, you can always aspire to do better.
Yeah, I think the answer though is just, it's really communicating, you know, what skills are being taught. You know, because I think that, you know, just the thought of packets, you know, like catapults me back 20 years. So it's, you know, we really need to be able to say, these are the essential skills. This is what the fourth graders, this is what they know, this is what they understand, and this is what we want you to do. And to share that more with parents, because it's so individualized. You know, I love taking home packets, and you know, as a math teacher. So I like the linear, but a lot of kids do not, they'll get very frustrated, they'll shut down if you start giving them packets.
No, we, there is no way to it without getting through it. We have to do the work. The packets are the least of the concern. If it works, then we should send home packets every day. So I don't think we need to have a knee-drip reaction about how things used to be. Well, 20 years ago, we were scoring really well, and now we're not. So maybe those habits are the habits that we have to tap back into. But I think that we need a little bit more homework. A lot of the kids can handle it, a lot of the families can handle it, they want it. And we wanna be partners in progress, in excellence.
Okay.
Good, okay, so the next, the next goal was about gate certification for all of our fourth and fifth grade teachers. So this will be exactly the same as Horace Mann. We really had real high aspirational hopes that at the beginning of last year at this time, that we would be able to find something for our fourth and fifth grade teachers. All of our third graders are assessed for gate identification using the OSAT in the spring. So then we identify students starting in fourth and fifth grade. Mr. Boeck and I went set out on the pack with Ms. Kayberry. And really, you have to pick a full course to do it, and like commit to like a college-level course, sort of like the early childhood cohort did. And so we stepped back, it's here to look at like, what are some other options around that? We wanna look at offering that to our staff in future years and to any of our staff. But really, that we wanna look at, how are we doing access for all? And talking about like first best instruction in our classroom, how it's differentiated for all of our students and not just for gate students, and taking some of those best practices. So to start that off, like we did, again, using cognitively-guided instruction with children's mathematics, and working with Partners in Practice. Mr. Boeck and I attended the MTSS conference just last week. That's the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, to talk about how do we access all the tiers in our classroom. And the picture in the middle sort of talks about that multi-tiered systems of support is three tiers for whole class, some small group, and individual support, in academic, social, emotional, and behavior. So all of those things we're hitting on really well, and like we're doing great. Like, imagine that pyramid that we've sort of seen, that this is like a three-dimensional pyramid when we see it. And the tier three support, which is individualized support in a classroom, doesn't just mean that a student is struggling, it's also for students that are excelling. And what are we talking about in terms of breadth of knowledge versus like depth of knowledge, right? So do we just finish our fourth grade and go to fifth? Or do we say like, in fourth grade, there's lots to learn and lots of places that we can get deeper and deeper understanding and use those skills to do different things, before we're just going to the next, to the next, to the next? So those are part of where we sort of shifted that goal. You won't see that goal again next year, but it'll look a little bit different. It'll be embedded into something else. This is our final goal. When I met with you in May, I do have the information yet about the assessment. So to start the school year, we gave a student survey about connectedness. And we really asked like, how many staff are you feel connected to? And in the fall, we had 96% that said that they feel connected to at least one staff on campus. And in the spring, I had 93%. So drop, but still pretty good, and we're like finding out there was. This data that I included here, there's only 127 students instead of 264 that the other data is from. And I'm not sure why we don't have everybody's data, but I think it was just like the time of year and like sort of where we were at this moment. But the piece that I'm looking at in the PBIS data is the connections, right? So 75% of our student population said that they felt connected. So as I move forward in this, in these goals, you'll see it more connected to the PBIS survey and more connected to that specific piece of that PBIS survey, for more students being active.
Do you wanna ask elementary questions, or let me go and then we'll hit it? Click for it. Okay, Horace Mann, we met two of our goals, increasingly, gate class offerings and, now that I can see, social, emotional learning. We had two goals in progress, which was always the instructional piece of ELA and math, and also students identifying a trusted adult on campus. And then goals not met were Career Day, which we talked about last year, we'll get to, and gate certification. Okay, third grade. Horace Mann this year exceeded or met the standards, ELA 71%, math 79%. So again, our third graders are kicking butt, we're very proud of them. Then we go to fourth grade. You can see that fourth grade of Horace Mann met and exceeded is 71% of our students. Math is where we start to see that drop, 68% of students met or exceeded. And then fifth grade, ELA, 73% met or exceeded. Remember, ELA is English Language Arts. And then math, here's where the drop hit hard, 55% met or exceeded. So we'll be addressing this with our fifth grade teams. Okay. This one, Ms. Kayberry talked a little bit about, oh, quick, quick. There, this is my passion, the instructional piece. This is where I jump up and get emotional. The Common Core standards are written at a certain, if you look in the middle there, the stair steps, they're written at a certain depth of knowledge. Level one is just the regurgitation of information. Level four is the true learning and being able to talk things through. The standards are written for each grade level at a certain depth of knowledge level. So let's say fifth grade, we're gonna learn about regions of California. Actually, that would be fourth grade. Regions of California. Level one would be identify the regions of California and where they are. Level two might be identify the regions and explain the natural resources within those regions and how their area impacts the natural resources. So the Native Americans along the coast are gonna live very differently than the Native Americans who grew up or lived in the desert. Level three takes it a step further. Level four may be, explain to me which region of California would be the most difficult to live in and why? And how are people impacted by that today? So the standards are written perhaps at a level two, which is where the differentiation should be happening. If the standard is written at a level two, my expectation is that everyone can meet it at a level two. I have some kids who are not gonna be able to do that, and they're only gonna be able to do it at a level one. I wanna try to get them to a level two. I have kids who can meet at a level three, I still wanna get those kids to a level four. So that's what true differentiation means. That's what the MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support means. Getting each kid, meeting them where they are, and moving them up no matter where they are. So that's what we're really gonna be working on. Instead of just gate certification for third, fourth, and fifth, we wanna make sure that all teachers understand where their Common Core standards are, what they are, and what level they're written at, and how to address each student's needs. Okay, I'm gonna step off my soapbox.
What's gonna be your approach to the teachers, like how would it structurally?
Yep, good question. So we're all working, we have our Wednesday late start days, we have PD days and PLC days. We also have staff meetings. We also work with instructional leadership teams, which is one teacher from each grade level or department. We have a specialist, a specialist person. We work within that framework and do training. We're gonna be moving to a more PLC model this year with training the instructional leaders on the team, then having them break out and then work with their teams. We're gonna be sitting in with grade level meetings to make sure that they're addressing the needs that we talked about during instructional leadership time.
Last year when we met, we talked about how the way of telling them, explaining how they get to a certain degree, how it's a challenge for how we can perform, if we're gonna change and that would be a challenge. How do you feel about it now, in the next year, in November, when we talk about it? And how is it getting us, and what's happening?
We're getting there. Super happy Maggie brought on Partners in Practice. Our, the math leadership team has been working with them.
And then they bring it back?
They bring it back, and at each one of the staff meetings or PD meetings, they're doing a short math talk or a short math lesson. And it's been great, because we have teachers who have not been super involved that actually joined the team and are now loving presenting. And there are some people who were completely behind the scenes before. So we're getting some new buy-in and some new energy, and a little bit of interest again, which is kind of nice.
Yeah, the thing that we're seeing like from CAS, just, we don't get to see the actual CAS. Do you mind?
Please.
Um, well, we don't, we don't get to see the actual CAS, but we can see some of the practice questions or I A Bs. I A Bs, I always get the letters in the wrong order. Um, interim assessment blocks that are asking us questions. So one of the differences is that the questions are integrated among the standards. We're not teaching standards in the silo, like here's numbers based 10, and here's algebra, and here's operations. But really, it's an integration of that, and Partners in Practice have really talked about that. And we spent a lot of this year actually looking at, how do we integrate those standards to ask a question that involves several of our standards and is asking them in a way that could get our kids to think about solving it in multiple ways? And so that work has really helped. And it's an ongoing conversation about teaching our teachers which questions to ask, and they know. But like, having the conversation with them, right? And going back, if it were as simple as like a page of fractions and multiplying fractions, we could do that in seconds. Because we need to really understand that and move on to that and put it into a word problem that says, oh, they have to figure out how to actually set up that problem and what that problem's actually asking. The practice in those pieces, which is an integration of standards, has really helped, I think.
And very important to talk about, the iReady piece is a huge. And very important to talk about, the iReady piece is a huge piece of the puzzle that's been missing. We've been doing STAR, which gave us some general data. It could say that my fifth grader is working at a fourth grade level in math. But the iReady is really gonna be able, we're gonna be able to pull disaggregate data very specifically to find out what the kids know. Because one thing we've all noticed, our STAR math scores are good! And then we get to CASP, and they're not. So something's out of alignment. iReady is truly based on the standards. So iReady is gonna give us the data that we really need to figure out where the holes are in order to fill them.
And that comes in a schedule and with the
Correct, correct.
Assessing and gathering.
Yes.
So for the first time, we'll have a district-wide assessment schedule that we're all gonna be having data conversations around after the assessment. So, on the Ed Services calendar, it's everybody in the district, TK through eleventh grade will take an assessment. And then the scheduled day's already set, and it's already been shared with the teachers in anticipation of, they're gonna have conversations around the data that they receive to inform the instruction. And again, in, you know, mid-year and again at the end of the year. And then the elementary piece, like Principal Kaber was mentioning, is I choose. It also comes with a curricular piece to it to reinforce and support. So unlike the six-twelve, there isn't really a system out there in six-twelve that'll then attach to a curricular piece because we have so many different subjects and different levels, whatever. We really wanna know where we're performing six-twelve, which is new. At the elementary, we also have then that additional piece to reinforce or support or intervene as well.
I just add on, I just wanna shout out Ms. Weber, like she's really worked with iReady to help us. Our staff is being trained how to do, how to use iReady and how to administer iReady in the first week of school. Then we're giving the assessment, and then the iReady folks are coming in to teach all of our staff how to use the data and how to interpret the data with their own data. So instead of a fake dataset or like a, we've all lived through that piece, but we actually have to get to use our dataset and talk about how that works. So, our whole staff is on board to support those days, and we're really like ready. We've worked through the summer, and we're excited about like learning how to do it with data that counts.
And I do wanna point out, in the five years that I've been here, our teachers have come so far, they actually most look forward to the data chats because those are the few days where all you do is sit and talk about kids. There's no politics, there's no initiatives coming down, it's just me talking about my kids. Who's doing well? Who needs support? Who needs other support? The counselor is in our data chat, so if your student needs social emotional support, we talk about the whole child in the data chats, and the teachers are there. They actually enjoy this.
It definitely sounds like the data chat that, you know, the professional development they've been really focusing on, those assessments and the different methods of teaching with the teaching teams has really been effective this year. And as you get this new information, this is gonna encourage that more. So, I think it's, I really look forward to seeing how the skills this year
Me too.
Really evolve into the next level with what you've already kind of laid the groundwork for to add this next piece.
One question.
Just, can I ask you one question about the timing? A few months ago, you shared that you were doing your recalibrations on a, was it a quarterly or a semester basis? And I wondered, do you remember what I'm talking about when you said that you were assessing the kids once in the fall and once in the spring?
Oh, yes.
And would it be possible for the two schools to do it the same way, and that would be on a monthly basis? So that there is a more consistent tracking? And then that way, I mean, I personally think that it could have a benefit to try it out this year, that it would be on a monthly basis scheduled in advance, so that as a district, we're moving in the same direction and the families feel at the both schools that their kids are getting the same kind of consistent approach? Is that something you guys?
iReady said to do it like beginning, middle, and end of the year, and
Maybe I'm thinking about something different.
We did like STAR assessments every ten weeks. We all did that. We both, we were on the same schedule. We did STAR assessments every ten weeks, and this is really set up to do three times a year instead of five.
I'm not speaking specifically to the iReady, but I recall that there was a specific component where you were meeting Mrs. Kaber with the grade level teachers on a monthly basis
Oh, got it.
To talk about each of the students. And I just wonder that, given all the new data that's gonna be available to us, if those types of meetings are happening more frequently and more consistently rather than intermittently, then you could capture a student
Yes.
Before, you know, twelve weeks has gone by, and now there's much more catch-up to play.
And I could speak to that a little bit. So what you're speaking of, Ms. Mancheri, is about a formative assessment, and our teachers are amazing, and they're doing that in every lesson with a student to say, it's affirmative, informing them on how kids are doing. See, the whole class doesn't understand, they're like, okay, we gotta shift, we're gonna go to this lesson. These three, I'm gonna pull you to my table in the back, you guys are gonna work on this. And so we're constantly doing that, probably a hundred times in a day at all entry level. So we are using that, and then that information is then provided and being sent up, you know, when the administrator comes to drive our intervention group. So that's, it's a constant.
So then how often is, how often is the intervention group happening?
Well, interventions need to happen for like a minimum of six weeks to ensure and force a measure to see if they've been successful. Because they're honing in on like one skill, they're not honing in on like, are you a reader? We're working on like, do you know the letter F E one? You know, so we have to do that for six weeks. So they are happening monthly at the elementary school to kind of drive what the next group is, again, what the next skill is that we focus on.
Sure.
Okay. Social emotional data. Expectations, how your teachers want you to behave at school. We are at Ah, connectedness, just the last one. How close you feel to others. I'm looking at, I have bar graph. I didn't put specific number, I apologize. It looks like about seventy-eight percent of students feel connected. So, pretty good. We're always looking to improve. We'll be talking about that at the retreat.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for elementary team? We can quickly go through the early childhood education, and I think what we'll do is break for a working lunch, so everybody can grab, and then we'll resume. Okay? Unless you wanna plow through the rest of this. Yeah, we, yeah, early childhood, is it? We met all the goals, Maggie, team, have met everything. So, it was just a placeholder in there. Obviously, there'll be further conversation around the direction of what the Board of Education and the collaboration with the city will be. Primarily focused on just the transitioning of Hawthorne to Alrodeo is probably the biggest part of this conversation for this school year. As the board decides what they'd like to do with Hawthorne, then obviously that will bring Ed Services, elementary coordinator, and the principals back into play of, you know, programming, those types of things, preschool, all that stuff.
I'd like to add some point this year, I think we get together because it is, you know, at the end of this new school year that they'll move to Alrodeo. So I think now is the time to start kind of having like a more like task force. How do you, you know, what are you wanting to talk about? Like the preliminary work that you've done? Like what are the next steps? What are the, um, what are the means to solve to make that work? Or other information that you need?
And my recommendation to the board too is just as we bring back the next strategic plan, we're gonna pull this piece out because it doesn't really live here. We did the work, we got TK, we got, we were busting at the seams in TK. Our implementation's great, our teachers are trained, we've done all that great work. And so now, moving forward, like you said, Ms. Wells, it's more around second semester, looking at study sessions of then, what are we gonna do next? Now that we know that you're moving, we're getting in there, her team, and so then what will we do next?
Yeah, some of it is, you know, it's a very public piece too, like as far as like what is the need?
Right. And we could have talked about that too. Right. And I think we talked about how to make a private book, we wanna be able to address their health and support. So I agree to come out with this.
Yeah.
And I guess since we're talking about this, that like a part of my strategic plan goal is for the fall will be about transition. And when you see them for this year, the strategic plan goal will involve that transition away from Hawthorne and into Alrodeo. So it'll be part R's, it's not separate also, but it'll definitely be part R's.
So after looking at some of the consolidated data here that we did today, I wanted to ask our site leaders, both sides, is there one particular result that was a little off-putting that you are prepared to deal with immediately?
Fifth grade math.
Fifth grade math, thank you.
That's the answer that you're looking for? I mean, I think that that's
No, it's, it's, we're good.
No. I was actually gonna say that the, that I see some positives on our fifth grade math, and you get that's a known place that we've like dug down in, but I'm also interested to know what's going on with science, actually. Like how are we at sixty-five for science? So between us, math and science?
Fifth grade, fifth grade.
Fifth grade, fifth grade, yeah.
One particular bit of data that's kind of off-putting to you, you need attention to?
For me, it was the PBIS data, the percentage of students, thinking that their peers probably were, they probably were, that's about six percent, not too many, not too many percent. Even though ninety-six percent of the students said the iReady expectations were their perceptions of their peers, that
What about academically?
Academically, I was just
Just overall?
Overall, I mean, I mean, for math, I'm sure, math is like my art, but English math, I don't speak to it that well.
Do you transition with seniors? It's interesting with sophomores. It's so similar, I expect it's a lot. So there seems to be this general district-wide math and science gap, which is good enough because that helps us kind of think in the direction of where we need to go in the district. That's what I'll leave this, so thank you, Ford, for sharing.
Can I add something? The concern that I have is when I'm visiting schools is that there's a balance between the real-world experiences that kids get from field trips and their, you know, their trips that they're leaving school for, you know, three or four days. I know that when I'm visiting schools, I very seldom see kids in the classroom like on a regular basis. We're pulling our kids out of the instructional classroom environment for all kinds of things. So it's like, where's their, they're on a trip, they're on another field trip. And I think that those are great experiences, but our kids are really missing out on what's happening in the classroom because there's so much exposure through wonderful programs from PTA, from VHF. It just, there's a lot, there's very little time where I see the constant, you know, the stability of being in the classroom.
And I've heard a lot of that, especially at the elementary schools in general, there's a lot of pull-up, that they're not, some of the reasons
Assembly.
Some of the reasons are these areas are weaknesses of ours because we're not spending actual time in the classroom.
I think it's reflective in our
So, so that, then that might be something that needs to be evaluated. I would say that, looking year over year over year, I'm not saying it in major increases in improvement in our data, in our, at least our testing space. It's, I think it's time to think a little more radically. So, if that, what you're saying about it, what I mean that is, we can kind of, kids need to be in class more, you know? Just work on, let's focus on that.
And oftentimes, when we make comments like that, people go to the extreme, and they think, oh, you know, take everything away. And I'm not saying that at all.
It's moderation, it's moderation, but a lot, especially at that level, there's a lot of specialists, they get pulled out for a lot of things. And it's great that we live in a community that has all of these wonderful things, but this is the result.
Right.
Right? So now we're kind of seeing it by this in the backside. So now we have to move
Field trips, the grade level.
I think if you hold teachers on this, this is what we wanted to make in the fact that they, that we call, they really sometimes feel like they're losing so much time.
Hold the teachers on it, and they'll say, they'll agree. So that's, you know, that's obviously up to you guys. My last, my last thought is this, my last thought is this, is I have advocated for more project-based learning in our schools, and it's something we really haven't dove into. In order to maybe jumpstart our increase in our performances, might this be the time to consider this more? It's not a huge adjustment, like I said, moderation. If you just started introducing the idea across the schools, across the grade levels, and obviously through cross-curricular, that we can maybe get, if math and science seem to be our weak points, like starting to incorporate that into more project-based learning environments, perhaps that might get kids a little more understanding of the real-world application. Because the biggest thing kids will say about math and science is, I'm not gonna use this, right? When I'm in school, I'm not gonna use this. Why am I not gonna use this? So they have a harder time retaining. It's harder to convince a kid that they won't read and write the rest of their lives. But we can see very clearly, that's a good chance, you may not use algebra for the rest of your life, once you, once you read high school. That's a good chance, and we'll have to read and write, pretty much guaranteed. So, that's a thought that I've always wanted to reintroduce and get back into it, and I put that out there for consideration when you guys go on to retreat.
My suggestion would be, generally here, we hear about manual and stuff that, you know, that's a lot. You know, different topics come up about, questions about why aren't we doing this for the children, or why don't we have more field trips on certain things, or more field trips in general? And I feel like for the stability of your ability to provide instruction, if there's a way that, if it's not already happening, that we really just kind of lay some of those things out at the beginning of the year for the parents and the community of, these are the type of field trips, either when, you know, what field trips would be happening, even if you don't have the exact date, but just like, these are the field trips and this is why, and this is when they're happening. And this is really after kind of assessing all options this year, this is what we decided on for this year. And not to be inflexible, but to really kind of set the standard of, this is what we've set for this year. If there's things you wanna see the next year, let us know. Like right now, this is what we planned for this year, and here's the thinking behind it. And we're always open in the next year to consider if there's other ideas that come up throughout the year. And of course, there may be other conditions, which is so possible that you made one to just conserve, and you always have that prerogative. But I think just to set the expectation that this is our schedule, and when we start, then try to adjust this for everything that comes up throughout the year, throws off everybody's ability to deliver instruction and to stay focused. And I think that that, despite communicating that to the parents in advance and why, and the thinking that they're to PTA and to board, so that everybody's kind of on board and can respect that this is the plan more, and I think would be helpful for you guys, if you think so. I mean, it just seems that, like, when I get a lot of professors, I just feel like, wow, that's just like, in the middle of the year, like, it's one month left at school, and we have to separate teachers from other schools to just like throw off their schedule and put this in now, but certainly I would look at the next year. So, I think that that's an important piece when you're doing a plan, and incorporate that into when you do your registries or how you do
Would it help if on our website, maybe we had a tab or a button that said field trips? And it showed each grade level, what we have planned for the year?
Yeah, and also just, it's really a setting that, these are, and that you have a schedule. It's not just that, or, you know, throughout the year, you're just starting to figure this out. Like, this is what, what we're doing, and this is why, there's thinking behind it, and this is the timeframe. Now, you may change different weeks, or different, I may do it on a different, but at least people know, like, there's a reason for it, and not just like, look, the rubs or disrupt any grades, like what's going on, and what's going on, and that's always that.
In relationship to what you were just talking about, Ms. Wells, one of the problems is that when you go on these field trips, it's the kids that stay behind that you have to address also, and why they stay behind and what they're gonna be doing. And sometimes the idea that it's free time and so on, so there has to be very specific jobs for these people for learning situation for them when they stay back. I think you need to monitor that.
I appreciate you bringing this up. I, I think it's number two, I will ask, I will make a commitment to communicate field trips ahead of time, what standards they tie into at each grade level. But I asked that the board, and I know Dr. Brady is coming with this, the questions that come throughout the year, what are you doing for this? Please make sure you do something for that, throws us completely. Because we have to put screeching brakes on, talk to the teachers who then have to put the brakes on, get the information, make a plan, so I know, I'll segue for you.
Yeah, I think it's a good question to discuss it today, what things would we like to say, I think that's what you're on, you're on the, you know, like, I know, for example, Holocaust education, curriculum, or, or BFFs, or holidays, I know that's important to the community. So is that something that, um, that we can address now, and what that looks like, and how we incorporate that, be it field trips in or education, whatever.
I think it'd be great, because we could do that after we take a break.
And whatever else those things are, and then for you to come back and say, yes, this is how we're incorporating in this way, or, or this island is really going to be this day, or this is incorporated to be more cultural. But however you're addressing it, it is a way, and then that's how you're, you know, we, we can put out like the community wishlist, or what we feel is out there, and then you can come back and say, yes, this is how we can incorporate it this year. I don't know, we can do two, and alternate, you know, do a weekend or something that maybe that's a favorite one to do, or hand it up in that way. But, and then let's all make a commitment to try and hold that back here for this year, and then we can always address it for next year, which, what had we wanted, what that is. But at least we can find, hold our schedules more safely for the eighteen, for the eighteen.
Michael, is there anything else in this that you guys want to go over, before you want to go to the other stuff, or? Cause I know there's, there's some issues that we have to address.
Yeah, I mean, there's, the comments could probably touch upon just, you know, where they left off, but that's.
Do you wanna do that during? Do you wanna do that during meetings, or should we just?
I mean, yeah, we could grab something and then come back, and review that.
And then, Julie, you want to add a question or?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to know, um, once, uh, the scores come back, and we find out within the community, meaning within Southern California, what similar, similarly situated school districts did better than us? Like Dr. Scott, for example, you mentioned with the teachers, they meet a cohort, are learning from each other, and they're having a homologous. So are we doing the same thing with the Oak Parks, or the Manhattan Beach, or the La Cañadas, where we are comparing, um, our approaches and our academic approach to see how those higher-scoring school districts are doing, so that we, we can learn, and maybe they can learn from us, you know? Not that it's a one-way street, but is that happening as a way to combat?
It is, and, and what, and, and it's appropriate that it's, that you ask that, uh, you know, we have on the agenda for tonight for, you know, AXA and, you know, memberships, so that we can talk to other school districts that are, otherwise, we stay in our own bubble, and we keep talking, 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 making movements. But we've gotta get out, and we have to, through memberships like AXA, talk to districts, other, our counterparts in other school districts. That membership helps us do that, because that is important for us to find out what, what's working for other schools.
Best practices.
Yeah.
How do you do that not?
Uh, there's, gosh.
Conferences are great.
Meetings.
Well, and we're lucky, because, uh, Dr. Scott is actually our middle school rep for the state, so she actually gets to connect with middle school principals and administration across the state. Also, on the Personnel Services for the state, um, on the Student Services and Special Education for the state as well. So we're lucky, because in our region, we are able to secure new response, but this is unique. Beverly Hills has not been involved in Region fourteen for numerous years, and this, under this administration, this is the first time that we've actually made a representation. Like, there isn't a lot of Santa Monica Mall, and the staff, or Culver City, it's really like your Manhattan Beaches, your Laguna's, your Newport Mesa's, they're overly involved in the organization. And so we're actually kind of starting to get, I mean, use the word street cred a little bit, and getting out there and saying, we are.
We know them, they're us.
Yes. Um, and, and so we wanna represent, and so we're, we're being appointed and elected into positions, because they're seeing the work that we're doing around our pathways, our academics, our student services. And so it's great, I mean, it's really awesome to see from outside, just in the six years that I've been here, to see us being able to be thrust into positions and move into the organization.
And then do you feel like being, being exposed in that way, um, like what are you learning from them? You know, like, I know how you're, how amazing you are, do you feel like they're also bringing the same lessons, or are, are we tapping into them as we should be, or, you know, what's your?
Totally, um, I think we're all kind of slightly obnoxious to each other, so when we have the opportunity, like if Kelly goes to a meeting, um, again, it, it's monthly, they're very, it's typically around lunchtime, so we do have to give up some of our own personal time to participate. Um, so Kelly goes and attends during lunch, and then we all, those that would be connected to the middle grades, receive that information. So she is getting stuff from all her colleagues across the state, uh, you know, she sits on a committee of nineteen, there's nineteen areas throughout the state, so she gets access to eighteen. And we all do a really great job of then sharing back out, so everyone knows if I attended a meeting, because then all of a sudden they're in. Oh, sorry, uh, and they receive stuff from that, or, you know, um, and so it's great. It helped a ton, I'm gonna be honest, like during the pandemic, too, sharing home, uh, learning opportunities and resources, uh, coming out of that, going into understanding the new CASP exam. You know, it was fifty percent of the assessment coming out of the pandemic, what does that mean to us? You know, so, uh, but also legislation, like the new math framework has just been adopted, uh, and so we're all still unpacking the hundred-page document that was just dropped, you know, um, in understanding what, how, and what is that, not only gonna impact us, but just us as a state, really? Uh, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's an awesome opportunity for us to steal.
Professional sharing.
Yeah, professional sharing is the right word to say it.
I don't, I'm, I learn in groups, I like being part of a board, even though we might argue, I love hearing what my other colleagues have to say. We don't argue much, but if, if we disagree, that's what I mean, if we disagree, I appreciate the debate a lot. And so I just wonder if you guys are also able to figure out, you're doing really great, and call them and say, hey, Oak Park, can I shadow your math? Um, your math classes for a couple days, you know? Um, I'm not, I'm in my life not above asking for help, and certainly as a district, we, we are not, we.
That.
And so that's how NWEA and I really got to our table, just, um, along those lines, is that we went out and, and drew a big wide net of like, who was performing well, who saw increase in some of the scores. Um, so in examples, Redondo Beach is one that has come up the ranks, um, and has really, uh, put forth some growth behind their CASP exam. And so we're reaching out to them, Manhattan Beaches, uh, I ready, to even Torrance at the elementary level, you know, so we, we are pulling on those. And one of the things that we have been thinking through, like, which drew specifically, is having some of the teachers from the other school that have implemented something like NWEA to authenticity, like they're using it, and talking about it, is bringing in a math, science, and English teacher from a different high school to meet with our departments, to say, this is what it looks like in my classroom, and the discussion behind that, and, uh, Beverly Vista as well, so, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, I just would encourage more of that, you know, share your best practices.
All right, well, I'm gonna dismiss the highest table first, who am I?
Dustin's.
You just blew it, you gotta do it. No, as soon as everybody has the food, we'll continue. And by this, I don't mean, Michelle's talking game, I don't mean, just to give you a question.
Matt, so are we ready? You have the call. So for the updated classified plan, uh, we took out the training and support pieces, those things are things you'll see regularly every year. When we bring back the strategic plan goals, we'll just reposition ourselves there with the updated goals, um, for the training and support. You heard a lot of what training and support that happens, this really happens at the site, it doesn't happen with just us, aside from just the new teacher orientation, things like that. Um, so we'll bring those back. The two that were in progress, um, as far as our work, um, one, we talked about this, recruiting, hiring, onboarding, and really one of the things that we're kind of held up is the implementation of human capital management systems through Laco. As you know, we're making this big transition, um, myself, or my team, as well as Rafael's team, um, do over probably six or seven hours of training, um, two days a week, all summer, they've been doing that. Uh, Rafael and I have been in leadership meetings as well, making this transition, so once we do this, we'll be well-positioned uh, for our recruiting, hiring, training, onboarding systems, as well as time, uh, time management system for absence, vacation, lead balances. This is just the timeline that we've been focused on, we go live in October, so one of the things we'll be really focused on is communication this year to our, uh, to our teams and to our employees, both classified and certified, um, their checks will change, the way they get paid will change, all hitting, um, uh, really November first. So our job is to make sure that we're communicating that, making sure that both of our teams are ready to go, and working collaboratively, I will say. I'm really excited about the collaboration that Personnel Services and Business Services have been doing, I think that's been a missing piece in our district for quite some time. This initiative has kind of been our, our, an opportunity for us to make sure that we're really engaged together. Um, so that will be a big piece in what we're doing. The other one was the par participation, we were in progress, we had one volunteer, we do have one person participating in par this year. Um, at this point in time, we may have volunteers, we found that the par process has been extremely helpful for, uh, our employees that volunteer as well, um, because it kind of gives them a rap, it gives them a peer mentor to engage in some support systems that, that they do. Um, the other large piece that we don't have, that we plan on bringing back as part of our goals, will be around, um, our successor collective bargaining agreements. As you know, this is the final year we are entering of our three-year agreement with all four units. And so much of the work that Personnel Services does, along with all of our sites, and in coordination with our sites, will be around those collective bargaining agreements. So that will consume much of the work that we do.
Um, a couple of quick questions, Matt. How are we moving along with the evaluation process?
We're in a good situation, um, we have been working collaboratively with BHEA, so we fully intend to, um, start rolling out new evaluation systems on a scaled kind of approach, meaning we, it's impossible to go fully wide, they won't have agreement to say, yeah, everybody's engaged in this, they're gonna wanna see how it works first.
You're gonna bait it, yes.
That's right, that's right, so we will be doing that this year, we'll be, uh, with volunteers from, uh, the organization as well as our folks. What you tend to do is you'll, we'll want to take people that aren't necessarily our worst teachers on the new system, because then they will say, well, this is just a beta test, so you're not gonna evaluate me this way, so we'll take either our teachers that are successfully performing and some mid-tier that says, okay, we wanna improve this, but then we also want to see how our evaluation system is working for these folks that, that are successfully.
And then is the hope that to coordinate the inclusion of the new evaluation with next year's collective bargaining?
That's exactly it, yep.
My full scale. Last question is, I know we talked about we're advancing a lot of job descriptions, what, how we are in that front.
Yep, so job description, good question, um, we have the company, thanks to the board, approved that contract. Um, they have all, it's a lot of it on our end, it's that data gathering for them to get basically all of the job classifications, along with the people in those classifications, along with supervisors. So the company has started, now we'll be reaching out to those supervisors, reaching out to employees, to set up the, um, they do, kind of a survey first, and then they start doing one-on-ones with them to make sure that those job classifications are ready to go. So we will, that will take place, first semester, I fully intend on bringing kind of new job, there's a little back and forth with the organizations, and we're gonna have to say, yes, we agree on this, no, we agree on, you know, so there's a little back and forth, but I fully intend on having new revamped job, um, descriptions and classification, descriptions, classifications, if necessary, sometime first semester.
When do you anticipate the full rollout for the evaluation?
What's that?
When do you anticipate the full rollout?
The ultimate goal would be full rollout next, starting next fall.
Cause it has to be in the.
A year from now?
It has to be in the.
Wait, the evaluations won't start until?
Next year.
No, he's gonna start beta testing them this year, and when we do our CDA, which comes up, you know, for next evaluation year, it should be included, correct? And then they'll be implemented from that point, which is, which is how you have to.
And what, what is the timing for the negotiation for the renewal, for the collective bargaining?
Um, so we have not, the organization, we just talked kind of loosely about when people would like to sunshine. BHEA leads the charge in that, they said they will, and I've, we've talked about the evaluation piece as far as sunshine, what that looks like, which is helpful. They are not gonna be ready to, they said they, they don't want to sunshine until at least September, because they want to get the school year open underway.
Right.
My goal, obviously, is to, our contracts end June thirtieth, so as we did three years ago, we said that was the date we wanna be done with all four. Doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to happen, it's like a good, it's a good marker, uh, because those, or those, those contracts, there's provisions in there that keep them, even if it expires, the conditions keep the, keep it going. Um, however, it's gonna be an interesting one, is that's part of what tomorrow, the, the, we'll be talking about with the principals, is what does it look like? How's it feel on your campuses? How do we keep the politicalness out of it?
Yeah.
Out of the everyday work that sometimes consumes, we've seen other districts, Oakland, San Francisco.
Yeah, trying to be very human about what it is.
That's right, so we will arm everybody with talking points, bullet points, and how do you work through difficult negotiations, um, sessions? Because it will be just for the very nature of what's happening with labor groups all across the state.
Thank you in advance.
Okay.
Yep, sure.
Okay, so, uh, most of the goals when we met last time were, uh, we can go to the next slide. Most of the goals, uh, when we met last time were completed, uh, the ones that weren't were in progress. You can see on the left, um, Beverly Vista, Forest Man, and Hawthorne all did their emergency drills, uh, as scheduled. So we did complete that, thanks to all the sites for doing it, especially in May, when things are crazy, uh, nicely done. And I already have some schools, shout out BV, who are scheduling next year, and, and we're meeting in the strategic, uh, you know, the leadership, we'll get those done. So we'll continue that work, that's good stuff, and, um, one of the great things about it was the use of tighten, that ended up being a really great thing. The other one is trying to get a hundred percent of people to use their personal phones to use tighten. Uh, we came very, very close, you can see four hundred and eighty-six out of four hundred and ninety-eight, did not quite get there, ninety-eight percent total. Um, two schools made it a hundred percent, um, one school had somebody who supposedly doesn't have a phone at all, so we weren't gonna get a hundred no matter what. Um, and, you know, it, it is a little, a little bit of a lift to direct, what, you can't direct someone to use a personal phone, so we didn't quite get there, but, um, we're really, really happy with the results, um, I don't think we ever came close to that, we shared nine-one-one, so happy with the results. And, um, overall, I don't think there's really anything I need to ask from anybody in the room on this, except the sites, we just keep working on those two percent who haven't done it yet. And, you know, some of them even were people who might have been on a loon, um, they might work night shifts, things like that, so it made it a little harder. But all in all, a real good effort by all four sites and the district office, so pretty happy about it.
Yes. Can we talk about the monthly drills? He specified, is that, are they emergency drills, is it like the active shooter, the?
We do all kinds, yes, so, um, we do evacuation drills like an earthquake, um, we do fire drills, which obviously have an evacuation element as well. Typically, what the sites are doing is, they'll often do a shelter in place to practice one thing, but they. one thing, but they also, like, the elementaries have to do an evacuation once a month, so often they'll kind of do both on the same day, which, you know, could happen, you know, a shelter in place could turn into evacuation on the possible. So, if that answers your question.
But, active shooter?
Yeah, yeah, we do lockdown.
A lockdown?
A lockdown would be an active shooter, yeah, as opposed to shelter in place, which typically is off-campus.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Yes.
You have Sean O'Connor as the command center for Harthorne Horseman, and Sarah Perkins. Wouldn't you want to have the command center overviewing that also? You have Sarah Perkins as, is that just what?
I'm not sure I understand. Sean O'Connor is the.
Well, in Hawthorne and Horseman, the command center is a thing, and then I'm, I'm looking at the.
Who did the Titan is the question. Are, are you looking at the picture?
Yeah.
So, what that means is, who initiated the Titan, right? So, one of the things that happens in an emergency is, and, you know, I've lived it, all the principals lived it, sometimes you're so busy out there doing something, it's easier for Sean, who knows the emergency is happening, to initiate the Titan. So, that's one of the great things about.
That's all that needs in.
Yeah, Sarah Perkins was on ball and happened to nail it early, but we do like, when we do drills, we kind of like to have the sites do it. But, sometimes, you know, like, in real life, the command center frequently starts the Titan, that's actually a model we really like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. To security? Yeah, go ahead.
One thing that kind of came up, and I, I think would be a great goal for us in this next year, is, I mean, you've done such an amazing job with the security, and you've really great with it, and you've just hit so many of the goals that you set last year, and for a lot, I remember when you first came in, and you just set all these goals. So, I really, really appreciate that. I think that, you know, we've got some different elements, and I feel like the CSEA guards, like, I really feel like that culture with the CSEA guards, you could really work on as a group, to really make that an even stronger relationship than you, than anything else. So, I don't know how, you know, what strategies you may have for really team-building with that, but really, team-building them into a whole system with the school sites and, and with NASDAQ and everyone else. Originally, when, before you came, we had CSEA, NASDAQ, and, and they've always kind of been separated, and as you can see, it's moving together now, but I think to purposely decide, how do we team-build that, and really make that more integrated, I think would be a great goal.
It is a great goal, and in fact, I'm looking at my goals right now, and one of them, on the surface, seems simple, but it is directly related to what you're talking about. So, it says, "Monthly training performance meetings with BHSD security officer staff and NASDAQ staff." The idea would be that we have what probably should be happening anyway, but monthly meetings, you know, and then in addition to that, like, site meetings where our CSEA guards and our NASDAQ guards, maybe we meet for a tabletop, right?
Yeah, and the SROs too.
That, and the SROs, yeah, absolutely. So, this is very much on the agenda, it's my first goal of three, and so, I do think that is a very good one. And I agree with you, I think overall, our CSEA guards and NASDAQ guards have gotten to know each other and work together really, really well. It's one of the remarkable things that's happened over the years. But, I do agree with you also, that there's opportunities to do more, and that is actually my first goal.
That's great.
Yep.
I wanted to ask about the CSEA guards and the opportunity for them to play a greater role, like, and it will come when Tim's conversation comes up, but in other roles, like in our athletics, one way that I, I mean, the relationship between the children and the CSEA guards is this like, super intimate, very organic relationship, I, I almost can't describe it.
Agreed.
But, you could see that the kids stand a little taller, and try to be their best selves, you know, with, with those teams, and that's great. We had a few of them who stepped into the coaching positions.
Absolutely.
In the afternoons.
BV.
And, I did not personally experience those teams with my children, but I heard that it was a great success.
Yep.
And, so, I just would hope that if the opportunity presents itself, maybe we can cultivate their presence and involvement in other areas, and so, everything becomes more of a win-win, and they already know our students so well, and they can stick around a little longer if they want. I mean, of course, they would need to have some kind of background and expertise in those particular athletics, so it's not, you know, I'm not suggesting a free-for-all.
No.
But, I would be really interested in a little bit more of that, if possible.
Absolutely. And, I'm glad you bring that up. First of all, I agree with you 100% that it doesn't matter what site you go to, you see remarkable intimate relationship, but also authority, right? Same, same time at all the sites. And, in fact, in the last year, certainly, and I think even before this year, we've put a lot of, reasonably, we've put a lot of emphasis on perimeter discipline, right? So, and, and that's an important thing. As I look toward next year, as we look toward next year, one of the goals, and this isn't exactly to your point, and I'll, I'll get that in a minute, but one of the goals is to find a way to get these guards who have these great relationships with our kids and our families, not necessarily always on the exterior, but on the interior. So, take BHBL. Right now, when we have a guard, that guard's on the gate, right? Which is great, I mean, everyone sees him coming in, but he's not in there interacting. Like, if two kids start to scuffle, they're not an immediate presence. And, some of my guards have even mentioned this to me, like, we'd really like to be on the inside more. So, one of the goals is to get them trolling on the interior, not just during the school day, but in the after-school hours, and obviously coaching, if that's something that's possible, you know, we'll make that work too. But, like, on the weekends, the way I see it with the JPA and kind of the ethos of the city, is our, our schools are really now, with the JP and everything else, they're seven days a week. They are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the weekends, and, you know, and the weekdays at most schools. Our schools are seven-day a week, and it's our families, it's our community who are largely using it. So, our security ethos really should extend all the way through those hours as well. And I think we are designing a plan right now, that I'm very hopeful about, that will accomplish all of those things we just said. Get them on the interior, get them fist bumping kids, and like, nearer to the games, and nearer to the action. And, of course, if it works out with schedules and Tim, that they have more opportunities with kids outside of security, all the better. So, I certainly think that's great, because I know what you're referring to, and they have special relationships with those kids, I've seen it.
Very much. And then also, as they move more toward the interior, based on what you're saying, and we have, you know, our priority with the behavior policy, and with the cell phones, and so on, will they be looped in with what's happening, and will they have a little bit of training, so that there's a consistent approach among all the guards and all the, not necessarily the sites, you know, elementary's on its own, middle school, and so on.
Right.
But, so that the guards know, like, hey, these are the tools, this is the way you could approach the first time, the second time, the third time, so that just out, you know, out of the gate, they know what's expected of them, and also, the kids can see that consistency between guards, admin, teachers, and so on. I, I think it's so important for the kids to have a unified presentation of all of it.
Yeah, I'd like to be at those meetings. I do think those meetings, it would be appropriate to be led by the site administration, because your site will have a different style, but I certainly would like to be part of those meetings, I think I will be. But, I agree with you that should an initiative, like, it sounds like it's going to happen shortly, a cell phone policy, right? There are going to be frictions, right?
Yes.
And, so, how do we want to deal with it site by site? Make sure they're aware of the differences between, like, secondary high schools, like, and, you know, maybe even the two elementaries have a slightly different approach. So, like, I, I do think unified is important, but I also think letting the sites lead, that will be vital.
Sure. Right. And for me, of course, that's a given, that each site will have its own approach, I just would hope that they would be looped in, and there would be communication. I mean, I know how great you are with your, with your CSEA teams, you know, I just want to make sure that they are pulled in from day one, so that the kids are receiving a consistent message.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I know some of the talks we've had about CSEA has been some of the morale issues. Is there any type of personal certification that these employees can get? Like, I know, for example, in school psychology, you could reach for the national certified school psychologist, which is kind of BS, but, you know, if you go ahead and you do a few extra classes, where do we get this, and it's a distinction. Is there anything that they do or be encouraged to do towards their secondary?
Sure.
Now, they should, they can get something that is.
The, the one that they, they need to do as a California security officer is AB390.
Okay.
Most, a little more than half of our guards had already completed it. The three-day course, it was, in this particular case, that we're referring to, both the older one and the one we just did, was done by our insurance partners, Keenan, which makes a lot of sense. You know, it covers a lot of things that are, in my mind, both perishable potentially, like, you know, like, we do CPR every year, because you do it, you remember it, but it's, it's a perishable skill, you want to revisit it. Also, calibration, you know, what one guard at one site said regarding a situation was often very different than what another guard said. So, it's kind of like tabletop idea of calibrating responses. So, we did that three-day training, actually, at the beginning of June, just this year. So, those guards who hadn't had the AB390 now have it, which is great, and those guards who had already done it before, we had an opportunity to calibrate, you know, there was also laps, and like, so a little bit of team-building as well. So, that's, that's like a baseline thing. But, I do think the idea of finding training opportunities, one of the challenges that we, we face as a team is basically our, our security officers, even though they're 11-month employees, working twelve months, meaning this month, July, they are not working theoretically, and yet, you see them. Right now, we're down to three guards, kind of running around doing everything, it's a little bit challenging. But, what I'm driving at is, it's a, not 24 hours, but it's a 15 hours a day, seven days a week group, it's hard to get them all off at the same time. In, in fact, it's astonishingly challenging. Even those three days that we took, were the opening of both the city programs and the summer school programs at Hawthorne. So, we did it at Hawthorne, just in case something came up and they needed us. So, it is more challenging, you might think, to get all 15 members together at the same time, especially for multiple days. But, we, we got it done in June, and I think this is a model to look at, is, you know, June, or maybe July's hard because they're not working. So, sometime in June, to try to make sure we, we do a team-building and a training like we did this year.
But, is there one that they could elect to do that?
On their own.
Yeah.
I think that's worth looking into.
Yeah, because, you know, and hopefully we can reimburse them for it, but that might be a distinction that propels them to be even more connected to their career.
Yeah.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mark. Moving on, Sandy?
Yes. If you can change this slide. You can just. All right, so, the big thing that comes up here, we're working with Vantage now, who's been amazing. We did a walkthrough, and we've done several meetings with them at this point in time. I really, really have enjoyed it with this team. They've come in, they've kind of done assessments and seen things that we can keep, and things that, you know, are still good equipment. So, we're just in the process of getting the real skill and work together. We've also been working with a theater technician as well, and just kind of keeping everyone in the loop on that, as we make progress towards those. So, that is in progress at this point in time, and we're hoping to work with each of the sites to figure out best time to kind of start the revamp in each of those different areas, and just really getting a good understanding of what, what those spaces need and how they're being utilized. So, I'm looking forward to working with Vantage on that. On the second one, the IT data backup, the first couple ones are complete, the one that's in bold is kind of the last piece that we're working on. We have, the documentation is ready to go. I'm going to be sending it out to each of the department heads to kind of look over it, so that they know what to do in the event if anything happens, because so much of our programming that we have is based on a lot of the software that's web-based, and so, we would need to access things if there was an emergency, how would we find out someone's address, student's address, emergency contact number, so we just need to make sure that we have a backup for everything. And, that document should be coming out in the fall, so that one is almost wrapped up. Generators, I kind of put on hold at this point in time, because we have so much construction going on, and it's kind of one of the things that needs to be done, but it's not a big emergency at this point in time. So, I think that one's just going to kind of sit until Ken and I really have time to establish when Rodeo's construction is done, where we even want to kind of place that second site for that backup. Moving into the next year, I've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of the different principals at the sites, and kind of get needs, and really want to help them get their data in line through Ares. So, I'm working with Christie, our student information services tech for Ares, and really trying to make sure all of our data points for any of, ready data, attendance data is all kind of honed in, and easy access for all of them, and then we're looking to set up trainings kind of for that moving forward as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for the tech department? You said the backups for, like, student addresses and things like that?
Mm-hmm.
The kids still bring in usually a printed emergency card? The schools do have a paper copy at all sites, right?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, they all have them in their emergency kit, but it's just a pull-up, just like, any information changes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're not, we're not dis.
No, we still have the.
Okay. All right, facilities.
Hello, everybody. So, our last report, I, thank you. Our last report, I talked about our different areas that we were working on, and we have two areas that were in progress, and one area that we did not meet our goals on. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about those.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, on our first objective that is in progress, I want to talk a little bit about our decreasing response times for our work order requests. In the previous update, I mentioned that work orders vary in complexity and intensity greatly, so, they range from very simple to complex in nature. Simple cases can be dealt with virtually immediately, while more complex cases require more planning and scheduling than execution. So, what we found is, this last year, as we've been working on this, the reality of our work order system is, and where our teams have been working very hard, is we're trying to get to the point where we have an immediate response to service requests. So, every day, a couple times a day, we're checking our work order system, we also get calls and emails and texts, we try to sort all that out and prioritize them, and we're looking for immediate response, at least to be able to look at the issue, to see if there's something urgent or simple that can be addressed, or needs to be addressed. We're, we're working towards, and have been really successful, of correcting small requests on the spot or within 24 hours. And, as far as all cases being dealt with within 24 hours, our large, the, the goal has been, and we're getting to that point, where our larger project requests are now being scheduled within the day. So, even if something's going to take some weeks, we will get it in the schedule, I'll collaborate with the site admin, so that they know what's going on, and that could be something from an air conditioning repair that's going to take several weeks, because we have to order parts. So, that's the communication part of that. So, I, I think on our next update, really, we're going to be staying with this plan for '23, '24, and I'm confident that we're going to both check the box that, yes, we have achieved that goal, and I don't think we're going to get much beyond or better than that, to be able to immediately respond to the small stuff, correct the small things on the spot or within the next day, and then get things scheduled for 24 hour, or within 24 hours of the more major projects. Moving on to the next area, where we did not meet our goal, we have just been working so hard in our department to try to keep up with the needs that we have, and try to keep our department organized. We have not been able to put together a meaningful survey to disseminate to the principals. I will have that together by the fall of '23. We've been really focused on internal departmental improvements, and one of the most major things is our department has always been a very manual, paperwork-oriented thing. My secretary's done an incredible job of getting things organized and digitized, where now, where we used to spend a tremendous amount of time trying to track all of our projects, she's created a spreadsheet to share with Rafael and other purchasing staff members, so that we can see when our projects are more improved. It, it just helps the entire workload. So, it's been a major focus. I'd say we're about 95% there by the end of summer, the next couple of weeks, I think we're going to be really dialed in for next year. So, we're really trying to optimize our department, so that we can get best feedback we can get. We know a lot of things need improvement, and those are internal things, that's really what I've been focused on, and this coming September, we'll start disseminating the information to principals, so they can give us direct feedback. And, by the way, I just want to mention, and I think all the principals here can attest to that, we, we talk all the time, so it's not like we don't have great communication, and whether it's text, phone calls, emails, or whatever, we're all in good communication all the time. My next area. My next area, uh, that we'll talk about a little bit is our random site inspections. Um, this last year was the first year that we actually started official custodial and site inspections. Um, and at the end of school, there's no point in doing the site inspections to keep up with staff because we're in a completely different mode. We're summer cleaning, we're keeping up with summer school JBA programs and doing all our projects. So we create milestones that we have to achieve and get to, but the regular site inspections don't resume, um, until September. You know, after school starts, we give it a few weeks to get, you know, everybody acclimated, and then we'll start, um, re-inspecting our sites on a weekly basis for a lot of things and the maintenance and operations things, um, issues. Um, inspections will continue throughout the year from September to June. And that'll be our normal inspection cycle, and then when school gets out, until September, again, each summer, we'll be focused on our summer projects and reaching the milestones that we have for our summer cleaning. That's it for my presentation. I do want to move back just real quickly to one of the areas that we did, um, meet our goal for last year, which is our fit reports. Um, we just literally today got our fit report inspection results back, and I'm so proud of my teams. Um, we've got two schools now that are in the exemplary stage, um, out of a hundred percent. Uh, Hawthorne School came in rated at ninety nine point eight nine percent. Beverly Vista came in at ninety nine point five two percent. Uh, we're in the ninety sevens at both the high school and Forest Man. Uh, within the next week, uh, all the deficiencies that were on this year's report will be cleared. My team's already have it. And I have to say, the reason I'm really excited about this is over the last several years, um, it's taken us basically the entire year to not only keep up with our workload, but to also keep up with our fit report findings. This year, two of our four schools are clear as we speak right now, which is really an amazing feat for my team. I'm incredibly proud of it. So it's a big accomplishment for the district, um, to have schools in the exemplary, uh. I asked our fit report inspector, who else is doing this, and there's like one other place in the state that's doing it. Um, we're, we're, when it comes to fit reports, we're, we're pretty much best in the state, and I'm really proud of it. It's taken our teams a long time. It's a result of all the resources that you provided our department and support, and I appreciate that very much. It's something I'm really proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Um, I would just say, Ken, congratulations on that because I know that's been such a huge, that's a huge movement, uh, in that area. And I really like to thank you for that. I agree it makes such a difference for our kids and the environment. And also really like to thank you for the improvements that you made online this year and how quickly you made it happen. And I think that everybody felt the big difference that, that happening, and hopefully we're keeping up with that now. And I just, I really appreciate it. I can see the difference, and I really agree with that.
Thank you very much.
Just one quick question. Ken, and agreed with what Mrs. Walseth. A couple of months ago, you shared with us that you were starting like a night shift. And I just was curious to know, now looking back, do you find it helpful and is it something you plan to continue?
We've not yet been able to implement that. I'm still working with Raphael and Matt on, um, getting the employee shifted to that place.
Yeah, there's, there's a process that we're, uh, you know, to get us kind of shifted that way. And so we're, we're in the middle of that now, starting, I think in August is when we are fully.
The May.
Doing that. And we do expect to see a dramatic, uh, just, we do expect to see improvements. I think that's one of the reasons also why, for instance, with the fit inspections, uh, we're looking at a much better score. I mean, I, I don't want to understate that those are very, to have two or schools be exemplary, that's, that's great. I mean, that's really the news. Um, and I think we can keep that up with this new structure, but it's just going to depend on, on if we can maintain that. And I think we can.
Yeah, I would just assume that since we're, we've got so many bodies on our campuses, it's not as easy, um, to keep up. So, you know, when you mentioned it to me, I thought, wow, that's really creative. We just bypass the system essentially.
It, it's a high priority for us. We're working on it. It will be implemented hopefully sooner rather than later, and it will make a big difference. It's going to increase productivity and reduce overtime.
Got it. And then is the plan to have an afternoon or evening shift, um, two days a week, five days a week, seven days a week? Do you have?
Mine all would be to have a two person team, uh, for five days, Monday through Friday.
And what would those hours be as, as compared to?
Probably three to eleven thirty-ish, two to ten thirty depends. Uh, you know, we're most effective if we're going to take that method and work that night, but only to go down to get the school as clear as possible. So probably three to eleven thirty, you know, something in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Ken, and congratulations. That is a great accomplishment with that exemplary status. Uh, so for the construction services department, um, last time we met, I was able to report that we met four out of the five goals that we had. Um, the one goal that we did not meet, which was in progress, was updating and renewing the facility's master plan. Um, so we, we are still making progress on that goal. Uh, we completed all the needs assessment at each campus. Um, we surveyed all the campuses, and that information's currently being compiled into a detailed report. Um, and with that report, there will be one piece missing, and that's our ADA, um, assessment, which was done already by a third party. Um, one of our challenges is getting that information, but we were able to figure that out at this point. Uh, so once we have that information, uh, we're going to put it all together and put a, uh, uh, I guess a set of plans together for our pool of architects to put, uh, a request for qualifications together. Um, and we'll be sending that out in September. And, uh, once we select the architectural firm to help us with our master plan, we'll be working with them closely with them and also Ken's department to come up with the final facility master plan and how it's going to hook me forward. That was mine. It was quick and easy.
And, and the facilities master plan is probably one of the most important documents that this district needs to have and maintain. And so we're really excited about the progress we're making with the needs assessment as well. So, yeah, it's, it's, we're really excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And how's the timelines on the whole Rodeo Center still?
Yes, so we, um, had a meeting today with the city. We, I got a, I believe we got approval. I'm actually waiting for a text to come in, or, uh, to be able to partially close, uh, Allen off, not the whole street. We'll leave it one way open for traffic and the delivery of the modular schedule that I've been on obviously.
Got you. That's exciting.
That is.
There'll still be some work once it's set. We still have to do some finishes and close it all up, but that's going to be a big, uh, accomplishment to get before school starts.
Well, now that Mandy mentioned it, are they going to crane it in or drive it?
Crane it in, yeah.
We should get pictures of that. I should, that's, that's an amazing picture.
Yeah. Um, thank you. And moving on, Ken?
Um, okay, a couple of additions where we're at, um, in terms of facility wise, working with Ken and the city on a regular basis to upgrade stuff. The city now has taken, has gone to us and said now they're going back pre pandemic where all of our facilities are open anytime we're not. So we have all these drop in uses that we did not have in a while. And so Mark and I have been, right now, putting together a security plan just to get it covered with Ken and all of that. But it's putting a great toll on all of our facilities because now they want a lot more work done at all these other facilities. So we're, we're spending a lot of time with that. We are actually in the process of, of redoing the basketball bath boards in the con time, putting up some additional padding to try to help their programs and to coordinate that. Um, at Beverly Vista, we are putting up for the kids, returning two of the C trains that are on the, um, asphalt there, putting wood enclosures on them so the kids now can have a, um, handball type of support there. So that is in the process. So Ken has been helping me with work the bath. We're also still working on trying to turn those basketball courts into sport courts and, um, and make that a lot ni- a lot nicer there for, um, all of our kids that are at school and give our athletes a better place to play basketball, safer and a better area there. Um, in terms of BH triple A, we're working with the BH triple A. I've got a plan. Now that I've got a, we have a plan every year, they have a three year rotation of uniforms. So we are now on a cycle every year that we know going into the spring, what uniforms I'm going to be able to purchase the following year with the BH triple A. So we're pretty excited about that. Also, we are now incorporating BH triple A into the middle school. They are going to come present. We have already scheduled a parent night for the middle school kids at BB and the high school parents at BB in the auditorium there. We're going to bring BH triple A into that meeting, introduce them to those middle school parents, to get them involved in BH triple A early on so we can start cultivating those relationships with them and the financial backing that they give us year in, year out. So I want to start working with them. They want to get involved with the middle school, and, um, so we're going to get them involved with that. So I'm very happy how, how that's going on. Um, our sport offerings that we're trying to work on, having trouble finding facilities and finding leagues that'll take us. We, uh, I've tried three different leagues and they did not want to take us, um, because they're already set for six team leagues, and we've become seven team, and we are, so I'm trying to find somebody else that we could go with and say, okay, if we brought both of our schools together, can be three in a league. And so it's been very difficult in terms of that. And, uh, my area that I haven't met is just getting the, um, grammar schools incorporated with athletics. Um, and that is, uh, we've had a rough spring with, uh, the JPA agreement working with that. Uh, they've been on our backs with a lot of different things, and, uh, so that was one area that I didn't, but we're going to try to work on that this year. So that's my, my quick updates. Questions, Ben?
I wanted to talk about, um, I was wondering, Judy raised a great, a great question, I think maybe it was in the late spring. It was about, it seemed that there was a drop in engagement or enrollment in the summer, uh, sports offering. And, um, I sort of wrapped my head around that. I thought, I just had my own, um, theories about why there was, you know, the cost or the fact that, you know, Bev Wood is taking a lot of kids for, I don't know, did you think?
The, the, the comments that I got talking to my coaches in terms of what, um, more so now with the pandemic being gone, parents are taking their kids and they're going on, they were on vacation. So we had a huge population of vacations. We've talked to the coaches about moving those camps to July next year, giving them a month of June off. And in our community, people just don't take a week and go to Big Bear. They take two months and go to Disney. Um, and so we have a lot, we have a lot of that where the kids aren't around in the summer. But I think June, um, talking to most of my coaches, they would rather move those camps to July. And then we roll right into fall camps for a lot of them. So that's, um, that's a survey we're going to send out. But I think, I think that's, that's one of the areas that I've heard is that they would much, they would want to vacation, send the schools out, and they would rather do it in July, and then we can roll into our summer. Yeah.
A question I have is, uh, the program, the sports program during the summer, who runs that? The school, JPA, or?
BHEF. Our, our stuff is run with the educational foundation. So they, they, they have, we have to have a third party administrator. There was some stuff that had gone on prior to probably most of us being in this room, um, with the summer camps. So the BHEF took the summer camps over and they are operating them through, um, they're handling that. It's kind of a fundraiser for them as well, but what happens is now that we have a third party administrator running that, or actually supervising that camp, then we don't, we have, um, it's, there were some money issues, I think, way in the past.
And how does that differ from the JPA city program then? It's totally?
That's totally, that's totally their program. What we try to do with the city and the, and our school district is not to have competing programs. So we put the middle school program in, so those kids, the kids that are middle school and up are ours. The kids that are K five and down, uh, those kids become theirs. So we have, we make sure that we don't have competing camps. And so Bev Wood, Bev Wood is a basketball camp that is run, and it's supposed to be kids that are under, I think, thirteen, twelve or thirteen years of age. And that's a Bill Smith run camp, um, that he's done for a long time.
That's run through?
That's run through the city. That's a, that's a JPA deal. The people that use our school seven days a week in the summer for nine straight weeks, that's also a JPA issue through the city. Um, over at Hawthorne this year, where we had all the summer camps, they run a youth camp that used to, for little kids, that was, I think it's called, uh, I don't know, Camp Beverly Hills, I think what it is.
Now, who runs Camp Beverly Hills?
The city does.
The city does. Who was running the one at Hawthorne? Was that?
That was Camp Beverly Hills. Yeah, and so what the, the swimming camp now, and they kind of pulled a fast one on us, was now besides being a swimming camp, it's also a camp that involves other activities where they go in the field and they're running. They're driving out there playing soccer in the middle of our summer camp, soccer summer camps. So that was, you know, the new, they had fired their, uh, swimming camp vendor two years ago, and this is the second year of, of the new swimming camp vendor that's here.
So there's?
So that's all the city here.
Two groups that run the summer programs, BHEF.
Yeah, they run ours, the high school and the middle school. They run our sports camps for the high school and the middle school. And then we, and anything else that's in the JPA agreement, we can't touch the city stuff. We can't, I could not run, um, a swimming camp, or I could not run a little kids camp because the city, that's in the city's wheelhouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, first, I wanted to acknowledge how far our program has come. Um, I remember the first time I met you was on a Zoom with Dr. Spahn. This is years back. So thank you for everything that you're doing to bringing athletics to the kids and younger and younger. Um, regarding what, uh, Mandy suggested, I, I would love to have a, um, a recap or a discussion about how our BHEF summer program runs. Um, I think it's a, an amazing program, um, but I, and I know that we do the two hour blocks. Um, but as a working mom, for example, for me to bring my student for a two hour block, um, is very challenging. And so I just would be interested in a refresh or a review, and maybe we, we determine this is how it has to be. Um, but I would love to consider doing it maybe in week long camps for longer days, or maybe like four hour sessions to it, to it, something like that. Um, I just feel that the programming is a little prohibitive on the families that can't come and go every two hours. That's, that's one concern I have. I don't know if you're the person who is designating this.
I mean, I do that. I guess you have to decide what, what your goal for the summer camp is.
Yeah.
For the high school athlete, is the summer camp to get you ready for the upcoming season?
Yeah.
To work on your skills, where we use two hour blocks? Or is it going to be, I don't want to say a babysitting camp, but is it going to become a babysitting camp where we're here all day?
I, I think you raise a really good question because I think it's, it's been really kind of disjointed.
Yeah.
And so if you do have somebody that's involved in more than one thing, there's gaps in times. But I think that we need to have a, a bigger conversation about summer school, um, based on, you know, some of the other practices. And so, um, I think we could bring that back, Dustin.
Yeah.
And the other thing, Judy, that we try to do is especially with the middle school camps, and we try, and all those camps, we're trying to encourage our, especially our high school athletes to play more than one sport.
Yes.
So we try to stagger those camps.
I hear you.
So they're at different times. And, and depending upon some of the coaches, because they are walkman coaches, they have jobs, so some will go later in the day. But we try to stagger, especially the middle school camps, that their kids are exploring options to play. We try to keep those, so we have, you know, girls volleyball at eight and then girls basketball at ten.
Yes.
And soccer maybe at twelve. So we try to stagger those camps so you can accomplish that by having, signing up for the three different camps. And that way they're not all sitting there for six hours.
Yes.
If you run the same, you run a basketball camp for four or five hours, the kids get tired and it becomes monotonous on the young kid. So I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but I think what we've tried to do, and in the past it's worked out pretty well, is to stagger those camps. So you can get the same effect, but now they did multiple things.
Yeah.
Maybe after the summer is over, we can agree that not all of these. Yes, because there's an academic part of summer school that we need to address. Because it, that is super important too, kind of connecting absolutely sports and the camps, but it's also the academic piece and also that programming in the summer as well. And so that, that is a bigger issue, but we need to get a little of our academic program as well as reshape our athletic program.
Yeah, and, and, you know, um, from a younger, younger student perspective, the city camps this summer were amazing. Uh, the fact that they were on our campuses was even better, um, and it went really smooth. And so as a, as a city person, I'm so grateful to the district for the facilities. And I'm a JPA user every day of the week, sometimes several times a day, you know? Um, I, I would also suggest that in the middle school ages, our programming lacks a little bit for the like eleven to thirteen year. And so to your point, I understand that there's a big puzzle going on, but I would love if we could pick up the conversation and just have a fresh perspective on it.
I agree.
Um, Tim, my only comment is, as we were talking about the elementary schools being overloaded with kind of outside academic activities, maybe this is a goal here that we might want to consider or we consider. Because I don't know if that's where the emphasis should be, and it's going to add to pulling kids out of class. Okay, at least keep that in mind.
Which one is that?
Lassol.
Well, the, the actual, um, and I, I think with, um, F I Y A, the way they deal with that, most of their, who would not pull kids out of class probably because most of their stuff is later in the day and later in the evening. So it may not, no, it's, it's.
And a lot of, a lot of those kids are AYSO basketball, so I don't know. I think it just, it's, it's a, it's a broad scope, that goal, but.
I mean, I just had.
It may not pan out where we want.
And I've had a lot of parents at that level say, gee, can't be tilted this down. We like what's going on. We see what's going on to middle school. The, the object of getting kids in an educationally based athletic program, being connected to the school. And they would like to see that at, at regence there as well too. I, I'm getting it from both.
It's, yes, I understand. But in examining it and based on a conversation earlier, I would just try to let you know how much it interrupts class.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you so much for all of it.
Rafael?
I want to put it for you. Thank you. So for business, as you can see there, we are going to go over like just which of our goals we need to, you know, focus a little more on this year. I think on regards to, you know, the audit reports, the financial reporting, meaningful principles, I think we've done those things. So I'll go to the first one, the business services manual. So this is something we're working on. I think some of our challenges that we experienced this year were in regards to like our current staff. And that's because of the Joe and all, you know, sort of my director and the situation we're having. And, and then from there, that we have in our staff, it's made it a little bit difficult to really get all this, you know, down pat. But we are working on it. We do have a draft that should be completed by the end of August. So we're real happy about that. And I think, you know, for twenty three, twenty four, we're confident that we'll have the, those, that manual fully implemented at some point in twenty three, twenty four. As a protection to establishing industry standard procedures, again, you know, really we're looking at in twenty three, twenty four to have that complete language from manual. We also expect that this will result in some operational changes to our district. And what I mean by that is just the way that we do certain things are going to be aligned more to industry standard ways of doing things. And we are, we've already developed some of that, for instance, you know, getting multiple quotes on things, you know, getting contracts earlier to the board. As you saw this year, we had, I think the, when, probably the first month that I, that I was here, we had a ratification of a large project. After that, you know, Ken and Steve have done a great job of, you know, having no ratifications for pretty much anything. We've, we've done everything we could to implement these industry standard procedures, as well as in, in business and really all the departments have done a great job with this. So, but with implementing industry standard procedures, it's going to create some changes in the way that we're operating. So, and we, we expect that to happen in twenty three, twenty four. Now, changes is something that, that takes time. So we don't expect to just one day to another, you know, everything changes. It'll take time. And so we're, we're going to be testing some of that out slowly and then begin to implement those.
Can you, excuse, can you give an example of something like that offhand to put into perspective?
So for instance, like how we look at, like, one of the major changes that we're having is, is with payroll. And not only with the system, but with the way that we're processing payroll. Like how that, that system goes through, like the different, the different steps that it goes through. Same thing with requisitions. Does it need to go through all the steps that we have currently in, in place? Do we need to add more or take out less? There's, there's a technology is a big thing that, you know, as, as, as time goes on, technology is just so much more important. And so do we need to loop in our technology team into more of the requisition process? So, so this is what I mean by just, you know, looking at the actual operational processes where like before, maybe it was just being, you know, you, from a requestor at the site to the principal, to business, then to myself, I mean, then to purchasing, then to myself. Like that was a process, like maybe now for certain things, we're going to be inserting Sandy, right? Because she needs to make sure that the printer that's being ordered is a printer that our technicians know how to work with. Or the computer that's being, the laptop that's being ordered is not a, a laptop that's not up to our standards. So those are the types of things that we're looking at. In regards to quarterly site surveys, we did not get to that last year, but we are going to be setting that up in each quarter. The intention of the survey is to really get feedback from our principals. This is mainly for all of business though, not just for fiscal. So for instance, if they're having problems with getting a, a, you know, a work order or if they're having problems with technology or they're having problems with something going on with construction. So all of those things, they have an opportunity in, in this quarterly survey to let us know if, if it's all functioning correctly. So that's, that'll be in addition to the monthly meetings that we'll be having, where they'll also have, our principals will have a checkpoint to be able to talk to our teams and, and let us know. So if in our monthly meeting, if we hear, hey, you know, this hasn't been repaired, it's really urgent, then, you know, we need to get on the phone with Ken and let him know, hey, by the way, this is going on or, or whatever the case may be. So we'll have that. And that's pretty much all, all I have for mine. It's, it's just like the other items, we've done a really good job of implementing. And I think these are the things we're working on first. Thank you.
I have a one suggestion. If Ken's doing this, you want to do your survey with this school site, maybe that can get incorporated into one of your monthly meetings.
That's, that's a great idea. Thank you.
And then you can hit those with yours at the same time.
Yeah, we might as well.
So that's way too simple.
Yeah. It'll be my fault. Thank you. That's a, that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael.
Thank you, Rafael.
Any other questions? Okay. Who's next? We're back, are you guys? Yeah.
Dustin?
Combo, combo. So ultimately, we had last met in May, a lot of these were in over the progress. Because we're in the process of one deadline and then submission dates as well. So ultimately, again, US News and Rowan for, the certain principal Stuart had already addressed, you know, we're still waiting on, it's two years past data. But still, we're going to break apart those metrics and utilize those to drive our strategic plan, creation around the goals, academic goals for the high school. Same thing for BD, same process. So we're going to kind of wait. So as we scroll past the academic excellence and jump into the program highlights, I want to thank the Board of Education, obviously with the Golden Bell Awards and Ms. Starkins, Superintendent, Dr. Bruggi, for being able to submit on behalf of the CTE program. So fingers crossed that was submitted. And so we hope to hear close to November, I believe is when they announced the Golden Bell Awards. Yes, that's correct. The great part is, is we did submit Teacher of the Year. Our approach was our coding teacher at the high school, due to the fact that we had already received the award from the College Board around having the largest increase of female students entering engineering or STEM related, which are coding courses. I do believe that that's a direct correlation to not only our coding courses in the middle school as being a Catholic, of Burgini, MacMudian, all the way up, or I forgot her, Mary Hane. Yep. All the way up to Jennifer at high school and her.
Her new last name, Haggie.
Yes. And so they all speak to us and they keep me in order. So I, I, we did nominate Jennifer, so we thank her. She met all the deadlines and she'll represent us at the LA Co. in September. In addition to, I want to thank Principal Kamer, this is the year reported. However, we did nominate somebody for School Council of the Year as well. From Principal Kamer's school, we won't say the name out loud because that person doesn't know yet. You know, it's being recorded. And then obviously National Merit, we are excited. Our, our Principal Stuart did mention that we definitely have increased our potential of more merit scholars based off of our performance in our SAT suites. So our, we, our fingers are crossed. We hope that we'll hear from your class soon of who got nominated and who could possibly be our national merit. So that goal's an interesting one that we may want to peel off eventually and maybe add to site specific of the high school only because it really is an academic goal of us supporting your class on achieving that level of merit. And then last but not least, the communications award. And so yay, Ms. Starkins for receiving, again, we did get a communications award for the twenty twenty-three school year from Apex.
Well, it's the public publication excellence?
Yes.
Not Apex ILC.
Yes. And so congratulations.
So that's a yes, not a no.
Yes. Around our, the purpose to success. So we also have, the board is nominating two people for the Laco awards. Awesome. Cabinet and Superintendent. Awesome. But I won't tell you.
Doctor Brain.
I won't tell any superintendent. It's being recorded.
We're submitting that as well.
Has it been submitted yet?
No, it'll be submitted tomorrow.
From being on lots of, we've been working with Laco. So I think that that has created an opportunity for us. And we'll really will be able to do that this year and continue to do it every year. And I think we have really great, there's so many ways we can nominate and I really put a lot on it. We have a lot to celebrate. If I can add to that, just to close out on this, we have so many areas that we could put in this, in this part of our strategic plan that we could celebrate and we could acknowledge. And what we're doing is incorporating that into our school site communications, into our social media. Because they're not all listed here, all of the amazing recognition that does happen. And the goal was to have a wide recognition of excellence. And I can say with absolute conviction that that has happened this year and that will only continue to grow after this next school year.
It is certainly in all my years here, it is the most present we have been in this arena all through those things. So it's, it's exciting to see that. And it kind of becomes that, it feeds into the myth, right? We create the excellence and then people believe the excellence and then they raise the bar to perform at that level.
And, and Mr. Marco, I just want to point out too, that like Dustin had pointed out earlier, that presence, that is what we're finding now with our accidents and being out and about in, people didn't see people from Beverly Hills Unified anywhere. And so that same presence that we're feeling as a board and a cabinet, as a leadership team, like we are, people know who we are now. And, you know, like I said, people never went before. We were just absent.
Dr. Brain, can I add to that?
Yeah.
This was the first year I was actually invited to the Women's Breakfast for the ACTA event. And it was so helpful to be able to meet other people at that event and to network with them. And then I just stayed connected with them to see what are they doing. And the last thing is that, that award is absolutely also for Mr. Seaman because putting together that Harvard booklet was a huge, huge effort. I know.
I just want to add to that. I would say, you know, a year ago when we sat down and we talked about educational excellence and what does that mean? And, you know, we took the strategic plan and really just kind of took it and said like, well, this, you know, let's just look at this through a new lens and changing our mission and our vision. And I think that, you know, sitting here today and listening to how far we've come, it's really, it's really a scaling. And I'm really proud of all of us. And I think that, you know, when we go through like just, you know, really Mark, you just came on last year at this time. And Rafael, you just came on at this time as well. And all of, you know, Maggie, you, all of you guys have really, really, so many new people. And it really just was a new formulation. And I feel like now we're just taking it for granted. You hit all those marks, you hit all those marks. Look at the fit report. I mean, look at where we've come from focusing on academic excellence and, and how much you've really taken a focus, even more focused team approach about how we are approaching our education. And we've seen it all year round, it's all year long. It's not that just now we're talking about it. We've seen it in our board meetings, we've been coming and presented. And there's been so many successes throughout this year. And I'm really, I really feel really proud of all of us because I think it came from being more focused about educational excellence and really looking to that lens. And when you came back after this meeting last year with your plans, I think that now we see the benefit of that and now we're moving into the next year. And I would say as you go into your planning sessions again, to remember that, that viewing through that lens of educational excellence and really what we want and what our core values are and, you know, what our vision is. Because I think it really, it really helped us all come together and be really clear about what we wanted to achieve. And, and now you're just moving it to the next level. So I think we've had a lot of learning, but we've had a lot of success. And I think, you know, when we talk about it in every level, from the community input and the, look at the PTA this year and how much that's improved and that engagement that at each of the school sites that you were able to create stronger communities and relationships with your parent body and the relationship with the city and, and all of those ways that we've worked together. And created a greater presence to celebrate the successes that have been here all along and the many, and the many new things that we have. So I just really want to applaud all of you and thank you all for so much work and, and working with us throughout the year and, and doing this exercise over and over. Because it was a lot to ask and it really, I feel like we really delivered on what we said we were going to do this year. And I look forward to next year.
Great, thank you. Well said.
Thank you, Mary. I, before we, before we move on, I want to tack on to a little bit what Mrs. Wells was saying and just add, we have so many wonderful elements in our plan that, that have either come to play or are coming into play. And as you guys move into your retreat, I want you to think about, I would personally, I'd say personally, hopefully they call it a degree, of the educational part of the educational excellence. And really say, okay, we've done so much, we've come so far, we have to cross that last threshold. And that is the academic, okay? And, and I think we have put into play everything we need to be successful, except we're not successful in that area yet. And I only say that because year over year, the data really doesn't change. We do okay, we do better than state, but that's not good enough for us. We can never use the state as our bar that we should do better on. So hopefully this will be a really deep conversation that you have with the team, Michael, in the coming week, how we can kind of shift whatever we're doing with the tools that we have and use them a little differently to create something better.
Michael, I'd like to add to that if I could. I, as I sit here and listen to all the accolades that we can give ourselves in every area that we've covered today, it's been amazing. And I really, I think that we have done a great job in perhaps the whole area. But I agree with Noah about the area that the one thing that I think that we haven't stood out in, as much as I would like to, in improvement and in giving up ahead, is in the academics. So I mean, I'm in agreement with Noah about the fact that I really, I love the fact that everything else that's going on. But it's the academics that I don't see being as equally as strong as it could have, or could be. So I'd just like to say that from my standpoint. I like everything, I mean, I, we have shown that we are really moving on. But that academic number to me is not good yet and we aren't improving enough. And that's what I'd like to see.
I would add to that, you know, we talked about adding all these things and we touched on this a little bit about other areas to focus on in field trips and other areas that need your input from the community that they would like to focus on. But one thing that you all identified is that it's not in, in English and science and that we want to protect that space for you to have, you know, the room and, and the ability to deliver education and all the work that you're putting into that. So I would also like to hear back from you on, on what your feedback is and how we can support you to make certain that we hold that space for you throughout the year. Because I think, you know, when school starts, there's always things that come up and it becomes like the flavor of the day or the drama of the day or the focus of the day or even the celebration of the day. But, but I also want us to really protect your space to be able to maintain your calendar about what you need to hit those standards so that you have room to be able to do that and, and we're not throwing you off. So I want to give you our commitment as a board that we're going to hold that for you. But so we, as much as we can know in advance, like what is, what are we planning to do this year from, here's your curriculum obviously, but what other areas are we adding and in what way can we add? Or do we need to take some things away so that you have more room to focus? Let us know. And then, and then I think we should be able to come together and really support each other to keep that as our focus. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
So if it's like field trips, are field trips to be during vacations or a spring break or, or, you know, whatever that is. I, I don't, you know, I think at each school site, it's different and what your schedules are. So I would look to you to say, here's, here's what we see as some priorities we've heard and here's. and here's how we can work that in, or we can't, or, or there's other things that have to come out to be able to do that. Because we need to protect that space.
And I really appreciate hearing you say that. It would be great, it would be a lot more digestible if we knew kind of a priority from the board, from a community perspective, what you'd like to see. And if we, we could then look to see what we were able to, you know, incorporate into our yearly planning that starts tomorrow. You know, what are you hearing in the community as far as, you know, with the calendar in there to make sure that, you know, we're recognizing, you know, what different activities and events of the year. But it would be helpful to know kind of like what the board's top priority is so that we can then work starting tomorrow and start to work that into our plan.
Right. And it also, you know, can be either through school or with PTA and their activities or things can be spread out as well. I'm not certain, you know, which different areas that we would do that. But I for one know that this year we heard a lot of parents bringing up Holocaust and Holocaust education and/or field trips. So I'm not sure how that gets worked in. It's clearly to me, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but it is a definite priority, I would say amongst the community about that education. I think anti-hate is another thing that we've heard a lot about and how do we work that into our curriculum or just into the culture and the behavior issues. I mean, I would say if I had to rank three things I heard from parents now, I'm not sure, it may be there already and we just need to articulate what that is. But I would say those are three things that I've heard, I mean, coming up during the school year. I don't know about you guys, do you have any?
I, you know, it's, there's, what do they say, there's 30 people and 40 opinions, right? Something like that. I hear this all the time about what the school should be doing. I fight and I clench my teeth and I say, reading, writing and arithmetic is what our schools should be doing. Everything else that augments that, great, augment it. Expose children to everything Mary's talking about in the context of reading and writing and science and math. Because that's what we're here to do.
That's our priority.
That's our priority.
Yes.
Parents can teach their kids not to hate, right? That's their job. Because we don't expect our parents to teach their kids how to read and how to divide and how to do all that stuff. That's our job. But a lot of kids do come to school knowing how to read, which is great. But it's, it's, everything seems a distraction from what our real job is or our, and our mission. Educational excellence, right? That's our mission. And everything else that comes up seems to be a distraction. And I don't think there should be such a big deal made out of all these other things. I think if they can be woven into the curriculum, great, weave it into the curriculum. As fitting by the schools that, that, you know, desire those certain things.
I mean, another example that Noah is, is Hebrew, like that came up mid-year about adding Hebrew into the curriculum. I'd rather we had these conversations now than during the, during the school year introducing these ideas.
Absolutely.
So whatever else those things, it's not just that, it's just whatever else is out there. I'd rather we just kind of put it out now and say, do these things need to be considered? If so, in what priority? So that we're not interrupting.
Right. But isn't it even, as far as that's concerned, something like that, end of July is already too late for that because you're already staffed. You already got your master schedule done.
We did mid-year last year.
I know, I know. But that's, that's where a conversation that should happen in, you know, April, May, right? So I, as far as what you're looking for, I think I made it clear. I think the focus has to be back into the core education in the classroom. That's where our district has to go. Whatever tools that we have available now that we've invested in, the time that we've invested to organize a district, to have a wonderful support staff or our faculty, everything is in place. We have to show that we can use it and we maximize results. Otherwise, I, I see us year after year invest in programs and people and stuff to augment these things with very little result, okay? Not no result, I don't want to be unfair, but not the result that reflects the, the financial and time commitment that we've put into these things. So I think this is an opportunity to just say, well, okay, put the brakes on all this and we're, we're going to, we're going to teach children now. We're going to teach. That's what we're going to do. We're going to teach and they're going to learn. And that's how it's going to start working here. Otherwise, why are we here? Literally, why are we here? I mean, to continually answer the cries of pockets of people about, don't do this, do this, don't do this, do this. Okay, we heard you. We're going to teach. Okay? That's our job. We're going to teach. So I leave it to the people that we've hired, you guys, to make sure that happens. That, that is not our job. Our job is to make sure you do it, right? That's our job. So.
And we'll protect it.
Yeah.
No, I think you're right, Noah, absolutely. I mean, I think at the end of the day, when there are glaring, you know, drops from fourth grade stellar math scores to a really clear trend going down, I mean, people will remember those things. And as a school, at face value, a school really needs to take care and address those things primarily. And so yes, these other things are nice, they're nice auxiliary things that can happen with the, you know, different field trips in, in Hebrew. But at the end of the day, we are on the hook for, you know, looking at glaring drops in, in trends academically and, and making sure that our focus remains on educational excellence. So I would agree with Noah.
I mean, I, I agree that that should be our priority. I guess the question becomes then, what are the other things that come up? And is there, what is the bandwidth for me of those things and you should address them now versus trying to address them throughout the year as they come up, as we said now, you know?
What, what specifically are, and I'm not rebutting, I'm asking, what specifically are you looking to address in this, or in this room today?
I'm, I'm not looking to address it today. I'm saying when you go out, when you get together and you start doing your planning, I would want to hear back from you. You know, what are you planning? What are you thinking? And then, then we support that so that we're really holding that space for you and not dropping in, hey, I think this year we should add a field trip to Leo Carrillo. Do you know what I mean? I, I don't want, I'd rather we address any of those things now or you address any of those things now and put them in so that we, you know, and if we want to address it again at the next year, we can do that. But just generally have like, what is your plan? What are the field trip plans? What are you planning to focus on? And then we know and we can communicate that back out to the community as well.
I keep hearing the word field trip.
Yeah, that's.
And I have to say, why is the word field trip coming up?
It's just an example. It's not an argument. But it came up all year round. We kept hearing about field trips.
Well, we kept hearing, why do they do a field trip and we don't? Why do they?
Right. I'm just suggesting that, I just make that clear now. I, I'm not suggesting we have field trips or add field trips. I'm asking for clarity.
You're just asking the school sites to be clear about their annual field trips.
Yeah. Let us know what it is and then we can be clear on, these are the, this is what the plan is and, and.
But we, but we can be clear. Is what we understand it?
Yeah, so that we can be supportive, yes.
Okay.
So that when people ask you, you can say, but yes, they addressed that this year. These are their trips.
Fortunately, I've got myself in a position where nobody asks me about field trips. They ask the principals.
It's come out a lot this year.
Okay. What I would like to say is, first of all, I acknowledge everybody's hard work in the last year and especially since I have been part of this team since December. And I have asked 10,000 questions at this point and you have all answered me with courtesy and respect, even when I think I bring a fresh perspective or I challenge the way things have always been done. I acknowledge that, to me, what has been happening in the last year has been like a building of a system and a community. And I think it's a year that needed to happen. Not all these people were in place this time last year. Not all of these systems were in place this time last year. And not all of these processes and best practices were in place last year. So I think that we're starting off from such a different point where everybody really knows what they have to do to take it to the next level. I personally believe that persistence turns into perseverance. And in my opinion, this is the year that now that you guys have taken such a multidisciplinary approach to everything that you do, such a multi-dimensional approach to everything that you do, this is going to be the year to perfect all the little sub-systems. And I would agree that the academics are at the core of all of that. It's the, that's the foundation of our community. But I also do feel that we are helping families raise little people. And all the other stuff matters too. The children matter, their daily experiences matter. You know, we're not just putting a roof over their head at school, but we have a whole system, a whole ecosystem that we're dealing with. And I think that we as a community can get A pluses on everything, but it doesn't mean that I, that I don't agree that we need to work on the academic part. I think we need to work on it in a big way. We need to maybe recalibrate. Maybe we've tried some new ideas. Maybe we need to go back to some old ideas. Not everything needs to be a huge pendulum swing, you know? But I think that as a team, as a community, we're going to dig in, we're going to do better. We need to be open to one another's comments, criticisms. At the end of the day, we're all, it's a reflection on all of us. And so to Noah's point, yes, let's please get our academics in gear. It's very important. And then to Mary's point, please come back to us and let us know how we can help you do that. If the families raise issues, then we have to hear them too and that's okay. We don't want to shut our community down. I learn from them, you learn from me, we learn from one another. So I don't want to shush anybody in our community. That's not what it's about for me. I listen to all of you and I want to hear what you come back with. As we've gone, you know, during each subject or each presentation, I've kind of responded with the few things that are important to me. So I don't speak for the rest of the board, but I hope that you'll consider those items that I've given you my input on. And I can understand that, you know, some things we did great on, other things were deflated on. But I think we, we are a team and we have to look to the future and we have to figure out every day we can do 1% better than the day before. That's just how it goes and we will.
And just to be clear, I'm not trying to dictate field trips. I think Noah's interpretation was that that's what I, that, that's what I'm trying to say. So I'm not being clear. My point simply is, is in the past year, as we've gone through the year and has, and has been the case in other years, things will come up where questions will be asked. Like can they do a field trip for, fill in the blank? And for me, that feels like that's disruptive for you. It's to have requests for different types of field trips throughout the year and other activities, not just field trips, but anything for that matter. I feel like that gets disruptive in how you're planning the year and meeting the standards that you need to meet in the academics. So if we can try and get ahead of that and address, you know, what those activities look like, that are extracurricular activities, that are things that take away from your day during the school day, as much as you know what that is and we can think through that collectively or come back to us and tell us what that is, then we can support you on that. I think that's important for us to be able to do so that we can all not be so disruptive during the school year. That's my goal.
Thank you.
Just one more, I'd like to make a couple of comments. We know it has been a marvelous year and achieving so much on the strategic plan that we set out to do. I mean, the outside, the picture outside, but as we've been pointing out, it's the inside of the academics. And I'm wondering, we have not yet reported the results of our CASP scores locally to our community. And I think it's at that point we may feel some setback or some repercussions. And I'm, I'm worried about that. So that, I hope that when we come out with the strategic plan that we know that that's where we need to focus our life right now because that is going to be a big issue. And I also, I've not heard anything yet just about the word behavior. I really want us to come back and I'm putting this, this is my own personal thing out. I want a behavior plan that's going to be put in place, that's going to be act good, that can be followed and will, the consequences will be there and that we know, so the kids will know, what's going to be expected of them in the school. So, and the parents, everybody. I have not heard one word yet about behavior. I mean, in this little session right now.
Well, can I, can I just share with you, because I, we actually did talk about it. And so like we, with our whole parent community, you know, the, the, every Monday this summer, we spent time and we have some really good information, some recommendations and some proposals, which were ranked and they were due yesterday. We gave them to you right away.
Thank you. I didn't see this.
So what's, what are, how are you seeing it work out? Like last evening I couldn't mine out and I checked notes. How can I give you feedback? Or what, what involvement are you seeking from the board? Or is it something that you're going to now based on this presented plan?
Yeah.
What's the next step on this?
So the original charge has always been that we'll get the recommendations from our working group and then bring them to the leadership team and then bring that information to our board. So that just because of the timing, it was, you know, every Monday this summer and that, you know, came right up to our planning meeting today. I wanted to be able to give you some information that is a work product of our committee work. But we as a team need to digest.
So you're going to digest it?
Yes.
And so then is it a correct understanding that come August 14th, there will be a plan in place and it's something that will be implemented, published and enforced from the get-go?
Yeah. Many of the things that are coming forward as part of these recommendations are really, you know, talk about the multidisciplinary approach. I mean, you know, there's things that Dr. Skan is doing already with her pledge, which is, you know, so it's, it's sharing that information now and kind of going through and, and, you know, kind of picking, choosing another one that was ranked as the highest was just the way that we collect our data. And so because how can we share that data if we're not looking and, and, you know, categorizing things the right way? How do we set benchmarks for ourselves for improvement? And how, like that, we need to be able to get some systems in place, which is why we're adding goals on chronic absenteeism and also student behavior.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to let, my feeling, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to see that.
You can use mine for now.
I just wanted you to know, like, like it's not that we weren't talking about it, but it's, it's that it's really in progress like that.
Can you add, is, my concern is that the cell phones and the social media, it all works hand in hand to somehow alienate the children and to block them from having actual social skills. And so my suggestion in regard to the behavior and the accountability, the data collection I see for sure, the consistent response I see for sure. But to me, to the extent, even with our elementary school kids, I think that the social communication portion where the kids don't even necessarily know how to talk to one another because they don't, they just text and so on, that's something that I would like to be seen incorporated in there. And also a moment where two kids are actually brought into the same room. I go old school on my approaches and they are actually having a conversation where they acknowledge what they did to the other, that kind of a thing. So I'll, I trust that you guys will implement that. But to me, I, I really want the kids to learn how to deal with each other better, please.
When you say this is ranked, how is it ranked by?
So proposals were given to our committee. So the people that you'll see on the, all of the people, committee members, parents, principals. And so it was ranked by priority, so important like of what to address first. But there's pieces of things that are, you know, in several ones that, that can be put together. It's not necessarily like it's a, you know, we can't get to the last proposal.
I mean, it feels like it's a lot to get add into like all of these things where I, I would really cherry pick.
Well, that's what we're going to.
And there's, there's repetition among them. For example, if I look at this just as a feedback, like city commission partnership program, to me, I don't see that as a behavior directly related to the behavior. I see that kind of like a add-on.
Auxiliary.
It's a great thing for building the community, but I don't see it as.
It's not, it's, yeah.
It's not a necessary.
I would agree with you. That's the voice of the commissioner that was, you know, at our meetings, which is great. But the practical kind of day-to-day strategies that we need to do are.
From behavior.
Yeah, that, exactly. So that's why we have.
There are great suggestions in there and I really love them, but I don't see them related to the addressing the behavior head-on.
Yeah, they're in there. We just, we're going to, that's what we're going to just pull them.
Okay.
So, so, Michael, I wanted to know what else we have to do on the list with this group before we either do something, because, I mean, it's time for us to go into closed actually. But I wanted to say before we dismiss everybody, is there anything else that we need to tackle with this group put together right now or any other information you need from the board or your team needs from the board?
I'm not, I don't think so.
Okay.
But that was.
I, I, I just, I made a note here early on in the discussion today. I just wanted to, to repeat it, something to think about because. repeat it, something to think about because as much as we talk about, you know, improving academics and we keep looking at you guys, I also recognize the fact that, that how do we reverse the trend of more and more students caring less and less about school? Okay? That's kind of an overarching question because a lot of this analysis on that.
That's why I'm suggesting you pull parents in to be the wraparound or at least the bridge.